Who loaded this agenda?
We didn't happen.
This is loaded. We only can go till ten.
To go beyond.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
I can hear myself. It had another. What was that, the city council?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, everybody. A call to order. This meeting of the regular meeting for the planning commission for the city of San Clemente, October 2nd, 2024, 6:00 PM in the city council chambers. I'm going to ask Vice Chair McCacken to lead us in the pledge tonight.
Please join me in the pledge to our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. All right. We have two commissioners missing, Commissioner Davis and Crandall. All other commissioners are present. There are no special orders or business, so that takes us to item five minutes. Did anybody have any questions about our August 21st meeting minutes? We all good? All right.
I move approval of the minutes of the August 21st meeting.
Second.
Okay, moved by Commissioner McCann and seconded by Commissioner Prescott Loeffler to approve the meetings of August 21st. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. And then for the adjourned meeting minutes, I will go ahead since I was here for that.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
So if I wasn't here, do I just abstain on that?
Uh, yeah, I think so.
Yes, correct.
I think everyone's going to abstain but me. Will that be okay?
Yes.
All right. So I'm gonna, I will move the approval from our meeting minutes of September 18th, where we did not have a quorum and we just adjourned. Can I just get a technical second just for, to vote on it?
A second.
Can we do that? Is that going to be okay?
I think it's fine from one of the other commissioners who was present.
I'm the only one that was present.
For the adjournment?
Yep.
Okay.
It's just Bart and I.
It's okay to vote on it if you've reviewed the.
I have read it.
Minutes. Yeah, if you've reviewed.
Okay. So it's been moved by me and seconded by Commissioner McCann. If you've read it and you're comfortable, please vote in favor or otherwise abstain. So all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any abstain? Any noes? Passes unanimously. Thank you for reviewing the minutes. Okay. Item six, oral communications. It's the opportunity, if anyone wants to address the planning commission on a non-agenda item. This is standard on every meeting. And I don't have any cards, but looking up to the audience, we have quite a few people here tonight. Anybody here want to speak under oral communications? Having no cards, seen nobody, we will move to the consent calendar. We do have an item on our consent calendar tonight, and it is requesting a parking modification. And do we want to, does anyone want to remove it? Or can we go ahead and just pass the consent calendar? Open a motion.
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Okay. Any discussion about it? All right. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the consent calendar is passed unanimously. All right, thank you. So we have the item eight now. This is our public hearings. We've gotten to it pretty quick, which is the goal. And we've got three tonight. Actually, four, four public hearings tonight. The first one is a continued item from our last meeting where we did not have the quorum, and it's the Shoreline Dental Master Sign Program. And we have John Camper, who is our contract planner with an update on the sign program. John.
Mr. Chairman, I go to this dental clinic. Is that a problem? I'm asking the question of the city attorney.
Sure. And for the other commissioners too, we should do disclosures.
Yes.
But Commissioner, do you feel that you can be fair and impartial on this, on this matter? And you're approaching this with an open mind?
Yes.
All right. Then you can stay and vote.
Anybody else have a disclosure to make on this item?
They are a family dentist. I should go more often.
Commissioner, do you feel like you can make a fair and impartial decision on this hearing?
Absolutely.
Okay, and you're approaching this with an open mind?
Yes.
Okay. Then you may participate.
Okay. So we're clear for takeoff. John.
All right. Thanks. Good evening, Chair Cosgrove, planning commissioners. Be presenting to you the Shoreline Dental request for a master sign program, discretionary sign permit. Just to give you some brief background here, the redevelopment of the property was approved back in 2020 for a two-story 6,300 square foot office medical facility. It is located in the neighborhood two, or NC2 zoning designation, as well as within the architectural overlay. This site is a rather large site and has approximately 260 feet of linear frontage along South El Camino Real, which you can see here in our site map. So it is positioned along South El Camino Real, right where the five freeway overpasses El Camino Real and is positioned adjacent to the exit here, was the old Tommy's Diner. So the project description is a request for the discretionary sign permit, which is encompassing of the request for the master sign permit, master sign program, which is required for four or more signs for the site, as well as since it's located in the architectural overlay, discretionary sign permits required for anything over 25 square feet for a business. So here, the request is for three wall signs, as well as one monument sign, which is totaling 103 square feet of sign area. And the signs proposed are pinned aluminum lettering, which we have a materials board here, as well as illustrations throughout the presentation here. So here with the red circles are the four sign locations. So we have the one monument sign positioned along the South El Camino Real frontage, and then three signs clustered at near the entrance of the building, which I'll go through in detail. So here, the sign area standards, it's just to overlay and compare the zoning ordinance requirements, as well as what's proposed. As proposed, everything is in compliance with those standards, given the linear length and frontage, as well as all the signs are less than 75% of the linear frontage of the building. However, again, the discretionary sign permits required for the signage that's over 25 square feet for the entire site. But it does comply with all the appropriate standards. So with that, the signs proposed, one and two are identical signs that are just over 37 square feet in size near the entry with aluminum pinned metal lettering that's halo lit. And then sign three is an aluminum directory sign that's near the entrance of the door, providing information about the business and their hours. As well as sign four is a monument sign that's 24 square feet. That's located along the street, as I mentioned. So here we have signs one and two near the entrance of the building here, positioned above the archway along both the southern and western frontages of the building. Next is, sign three is the aluminum directory sign positioned at the entry door to the facility. And then last, we have the monument sign, which incorporates additional architectural elements and styling to reflect in the proposed building as well, which is also Spanish colonial revival architecture. So the project did go forward to the design review subcommittee earlier this year, and they provided additional feedback that most of that has been incorporated in the project before you, which I'll identify as one, they did eliminate the freeway-oriented signage. They looked at relocating the monument sign, but they preferred to locate it as it is since it's evenly spaced between the building, as well as those driveway entries. Next, they did modify the monument sign to enhance its overall design to match those architectural elements and finishes of the main building, as well as they enhanced the window signage to the proposed plaque to be more complimentary to the architecture of the building. So we have all of those. And with that, with those revisions to the plan design, staff is recommending approval and that the project be exempt from CEQA, as well as in compliance with the architectural overlays and as well as design guidelines and recommending adoption of the draft resolution before you this evening. So with that, that concludes staff's presentation. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions you may have.
Does the applicant want to make a presentation? Okay, fair enough. All right. Does anybody have any questions for staff? Let's start with staff first, and then I'll ask if there's questions for the applicant. Okay, Vice Chair McCacken has a question for you, John.
The entrance then is oriented towards the freeway off ramp. Is there adequate sidewalk to walk around the building from the parking lot at the back to the front door? Or how does the public get from that parking lot to that front door? Do they use the public sidewalk, or is there sidewalk along the building on both sides?
I think we're just looking at signage.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm just asking, you know, just for my orientation, yeah.
So there is sidewalk that's located along the frontage there, which I believe would be the dominant entry, as well as there's doors to the back of the building. To be honest, I'm not, I didn't process the building, so I can't call the primary entry, but I know it is along that southern frontage.
I have a quick question.
Are you done?
Yeah.
Let's just go through.
John, Commissioner Prescott Loeffler.
Just a very quick question. On sign one, with the halo, the nighttime view, is it colored? Is it black and white? Is it blue? What is the lighting on that?
I believe it's just a, it's a white lighting. It's very small on the materials board, but you can see it under that elevation of the structure.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else for staff?
I have a question.
Okay, Commissioner McCann.
Can you pull up the monument sign image, please? I'm looking at the colors, particularly like the navy band at the top and the blue at the base. And I'm just wondering if those, you know, enhance or match with the architecture of the building? We don't typically see those if it's in the architectural overlay. I'm wondering if those colors are the right colors to enhance the building or tie in? Was that considered or discussed?
So there was, there was discussion. The previous design had, where the blue, the blue top is, was a painted brown, dark, like a dark brown. And there was no tiling at the bottom. And during the design review subcommittee meeting, they felt like the sign really wasn't connecting well architecturally to the, to the, to the building. And, you know, in reviewing the project, they identified that there was some tile around the outside, which has been around the outside arches of some of the entries. And so that's been incorporated into this design as well. And I think that they, the applicant can maybe speak to this, but I feel like they've, the addition of the blue was maybe just to kind of tie into the coloring of the sign, as well as just probably predominantly with the use of the tiling. So I would say that with the Spanish colonial revival architecture, you know, in windows and other coloring, you know, we do see blues being utilized for some of the windowing, window colors throughout the city on some of those historic buildings that are restored. And we can see that blues have also been used. So I will say that this typical color I have seen elsewhere, just historic evidence of that.
Thanks. I guess maybe in discussion, I would want to ask people that were on the design review subcommittee if they can kind of address that.
I can.
If I can.
Yeah, let's discuss it right now.
Well, no, I was gonna, I was gonna ask a question.
Okay.
Of John. So the tile that's at the base of that monument sign, does that match the tile that's in the inset of the arch? Or is it a different tile?
It's to match the arch, as you could see here. It's not well visible, but that is the intention, that it matched that arch element.
Yeah, it looks different, but.
It looks like a different tile, but you're saying it is going to match?
Yeah, it's supposed to match, and I don't know if the applicant can, wants to verify.
This would be a good time, if you don't mind coming up and answering this question, that would be great. Thanks. If you could just introduce yourself and then just stay up here while we just go through these, this Q and A, please? That'd be great.
Okay. My name's Mike Riley. My company is Starfish Signs and Graphics, and we did work with John on the package. I was also president at the design review subcommittee meeting. So the intention, yes, is for the tile to be the identical tile that's used on those archways. Our rendering probably, well, one of those renderings probably isn't as good as it could be, but that is the plan, to use the identical tile. The blue colors came from Shoreline's logo. That was where they started. And then I assume they selected the tile to tie in with their logo, and then we continued that color pattern.
So that would account for the accent color on the top of the monument sign as well to match the same blue in their logo, their name?
Yes.
Got it.
Do you have an actual color materials board?
It's over there.
We've got one here, yes.
Can we look at that? You could just stand there and hold that.
Thank you.
That's not the actual tile. This is a purple. Is that accurate?
It, the, yes, I mean, to the extent of digital printing matching paint colors.
Okay, so it's kind of an eggplant color, and that's for the plaque? All right, now I see what you're pointing to. Oh, sorry.
It looks like it's to the word Shoreline, because there's a line and a bar.
Is that the letter S?
No, I think that that's just to show the construction. Okay, so. That color is not the. No. But is this accurate, this color?
Yes, but again, it's, you know, it's a, it's a digital representation, you know, so the, it's the best representation we've got. These are, you know, the actual PMS specifications for the colors.
That's black and white.
Black and silver, yeah, and white lettering.
Okay. And then, so this blue is matching the wave.
Yes.
Logo. And this blue here, well, actually, both of these blues are matching the logo.
Yes, so you can see the wave has three different blues in it, but it looks to me like, well, one of those is what was selected in the tile. And this, this blue, the darker blue, is what's in the Shoreline lettering.
Okay. And it's the same scale tile is being used, that's being used in Reese's house?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, John. It'd be great to see the actual tile sample. I don't think it's going to be a problem to deny unless you ask.
No. Are there any other questions for the applicant while he's here?
Is there any other accent color on the building, other than those signs that you're tying into? And then the tile, the mosaic?
The rafter tails.
Well, the rafter tails are dark, looks like gray or brown or something. And then there's a, there's a color at the base of the building that's kind of a brick color, it looks like, or maybe terracotta?
The building renderings came from the architect, so we didn't generate those. So I assume that's a representation of the colors in the building?
Yeah, we discussed that at design review. Yeah. So I would, I would refocus us back on the sign?
Yeah. I just wanted to see if there's any other accents.
Cool. Are there any other questions? All right. Thank you. Hang out just in case?
Okay.
All right. That is the applicant's presentation, so I'm going to ensure that any member of the public that wants to speak to this item can. I have no speaker cards for it, but this would be the time where any member of the public, this is a public hearing, wishes to speak on this item, now would be the time. Do we have anyone in the audience that wants to speak on this item? Okay, seen none. I'm going to go ahead and move that we, I'm not going to motion it, but I'll just say we're going to close the public hearing and open this up for our discussion. Commissioner Kemp, do you mind leading us off on the discussion?
Sure.
Thanks.
First of all, I want to thank the applicant for the revisions that they made, because I think it's a much better approach than, you know, what we initially saw. So thanks for that. Oh, there you are. They're back there. You know, I would say that the blue is a bit of a, bit of a stretch since it's part of the sign, not necessarily, I'm talking about the monument sign. I think the other signs are fine, you know, and that's my opinion. I like the idea of using that mosaic tile on the monument sign. I think that's a great way to tie it in. You know, there is this, assuming there is this sort of terracotta color at the base, that might be more appropriate for the top of the sign. Okay. But I think in terms of the scale, the location, the applicant must have felt pretty strongly that the location of that monument sign was more appropriate for visibility. And I think that scale-wise, I think it fits, you know, fits pretty well. It's not too big. It's not too big. I definitely appreciate the plaque, as opposed to the vinyl letters that were applied directly to the glass.
For sure.
I think that's a big improvement. I think, you know, the signs, both, it's that tower element, and it seems to be appropriately scaled, I think, for that arch, for that space up there. So, I would generally think that, you know, they meet all of the requirements, and we can make all the findings, A through H, is it, I think?
Yes.
There's this on our packet. My only comment would be possibly using that terracotta color instead of the blue on the cap. That's all.
Well, so, that's comments they want to kick in at this time. Commissioner McCann?
I think, my opinion, all the signage looks great. It's appropriately sized and scaled, and I can make the findings. I do, in my opinion, I don't think the color of the little base of the monument sign or the cap is right to tie it into the structure. I think the matching tile is perfect. I also don't want to necessarily sit here and try and figure it out. I would recommend, or I would be willing to make a motion to approve it, and with maybe sending it back to DRC to take another closer look at the cap and base color, and then whatever they decide is fine. I don't know if we can do that, but, because I don't see it tying into the building, those two colors. It ties into the logo and its own font, but that doesn't tie the sign to the building.
I think we can make that determination tonight.
Tonight?
Oh, yeah.
What color?
Well, I suggested that terracotta color.
Okay.
I'm a little, okay, if I can jump in, I don't want to interrupt you.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. I personally am uncomfortable designing this, and if this is what the owner of the building wants to do, it ties into their logo, it's appropriate. I don't find it, you know, maybe it might not aesthetically please everybody, but we could either approve it tonight and give the applicant to work with staff the discretion to review, to revisit that with this feedback, and let them make the final decision, but leave it up to the applicant. I would be okay with that kind of leeway, you know, that we, does it tie into the building? Why don't you guys take another look at it, and then if you want, give them the discretion to change it with the staff? But I just hate to micromanage the applicant. I don't think that's necessary. Anyway, that's my thought. I'll make a motion. Okay. I'll make a motion to determine that the project is categorically exempt from the requirements of SEQA pursuant to SEQA Guideline Sections 15-301 and 15-311, and adopt Resolution PC 24021 approving discretionary sign permit 24003 Shoreline Dental Master Sign Program. I will second that, and let's have discussion. So, he's recommending staff recommendations.
Yeah, I can respond to your suggestion. I think that's reasonable. I'm certainly not trying to design it.
Yeah.
I think that, you know, given that there's, it's a Spanish tile.
Yeah.
You could maybe make a suggestion that they look at that color and try to match the roof color.
Mm-hmm.
But that, yeah, certainly, staff, we can give them the leeway to...
Is everybody okay with that? Amendment to the motion? Scott?
Yeah, yeah, amend the motion.
Okay.
Yeah, and I don't want to pick the color. I just don't see it fully tying into the building.
You just want to flag it as an issue and have them take a look at it?
Yeah.
Okay.
With staff's approval.
Jonathan, are you okay if we make, amend the motion to give some flexibility to the applicant and the staff to revisit? And what is it, just the cap?
The cap and the pedestal base.
Well, I don't think the base wants to be...
Different.
Different.
Okay, that's fine, then just the cap.
Yeah, and give them the option, if they feel like they want to review it again, that we would give you the discretion if they choose to change it, to approve it.
It does not need to come back.
The cap of the monument sign. Is that something that's appropriate, and are you comfortable with that? They also don't have to change it.
No.
Yeah, they don't, it's up to them, it's their call. I don't understand why we just approve it.
They may love blue.
Yeah. Let them do what they want.
So, there's just a recommendation within the minutes for the applicant to consider an alternate color, and that the commission supports both the submitted color, as well as an alternate, as well as...
An alternate.
An alternate trim color that exists on the building, should they wish to make that change.
Specifically, the roof tile.
Okay, understood.
Okay. So, we'll just make that in the minutes, and then you can take that back to the owner and...
We need to amend the motion, right?
No, it's in the minutes. It'll be fine. Staff will work with the applicant. So, I'm just going, is there any other discussion on the motion, then? Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, passage unanimous. Thank you for submitting your project and coming here tonight. This takes us to item 8B. This is another continued public hearing for conditional use permit 21-268. It's an AT&amp;T wireless telecommunications facility, and this is a request by AT&amp;T to construct a new mono-broadleaf wireless facility with an accompanying ground-mounted equipment. So, I'm going to open the public hearing, and I'm gonna ask if anybody has any disclosures before asking for the staff report. Any disclosures? Anyone visit the site or talk to the applicant or residents prior to tonight? Okay, hearing done. Public hearing is open, and John, you are up for this one, too. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. This is a, again, a continued request for an AT&amp;T telecommunications facility. So, just to give the planning commission some brief background, this was before you, back on March 6th of this year, in which time the planning commission decided to continue the item, to allow for additional notification to the neighbors, as well as provide additional alternative analysis to be considered with the project as potential alternatives. So, on March 22nd, the applicant did walk the site with one of the neighbors who spoke at the hearing, just to discuss the conditions out there and why they were proposing what they were. So, in advance of the hearing, the last notified hearing, the mailers were sent to 500-foot radius, and so here you can see, which is included in the attachments in your application packet, the inclusion of those properties that are within 500 feet. So, just to give a very brief recap of the project and its concept, as well as location, there's an existing Verizon facility out there with a faux tree on the slope, as well as a enclosure, mechanical equipment enclosure, that's located in close proximity to the water reservoir. The proposed application is to expand that ground-mounted equipment enclosure, as well as be located on the slope approximately 50 feet from that existing Verizon wireless facility, as you can see here. So, brief description of the project is, obviously, to install a wireless telecommunications facilities at the site. The faux tree would be 22 feet in height. It would provide four antenna panels, as well as additional supporting equipment for the wireless facility, and would be a faux mono-eucalyptus broadleaf design, which is, the broadleaf design is reflective of the wireless master plan for the city. And then, again, it would include that expansion of the existing equipment enclosure for a space of, I believe, 260 square feet, which would be eight-foot-tall split-face block wall to match the existing enclosure. So, here, we've got the site plan, which is long comparative of the plans, illustrating those locations in terms of that equipment enclosure expansion, as well as running the utility lines up the hill to that existing, or that proposed facility. So, following, as stated, following the last hearing, there was an alternative site analysis that was conducted, which identified four potential alternative sites that were evaluated by the applicant, based on feedback from the planning commission, the public, as well as staff, in guiding this alternative analysis. Now, one thing to note is that, following the last hearing that did not occur, in talking with the, some of the residents after the meeting, as well as staff, the applicant have provided additional alternative analysis that'll be going forward and is also included with their packet of information at the DIAS. But, so, I'll be going through those alternative analysis, but essentially with the goal to explore alternative locations that would still be able to achieve the necessary coverage for AT&amp;T, with the evaluation of how those would or would not work, in terms of providing the necessary coverage. So, here illustrated those four locations listed as A through B here in red squares. So, in various locations and adjacent to the proposed site. So, I'll be going through those one by one, which is also addressed in the staff report, as well as the attachment. So, alternative site A, which is located essentially behind the water tank, would have challenges due to the infrastructure that's located under the ground there, as well as the water tank. Staff did discuss that location with the utilities division, and they were uncomfortable with that location due to the infrastructure in the area, as well as it would result in, due to the topography change in the location of where the antennas would be, this facility would need to be 62 feet in height. So, with those two components, it's an unfeasible location. And so, here you have this, the star is illustrating the location of the proposed site, and here you can see, closest to that reservoir is that A site that was considered, as well as showing the coverage, which would be potentially adequate, however resulting in a 60-foot-tall facility, 62 feet. Next is alternative site B, which would be in the canyon. So, the required coverage could not be achieved in this particular location, and it would only likely reach 12 of the homes, and would result in topographical, as well as potential environmental issues with potential habitat in these particular areas. So, as well as grading, necessary grading impacts to get the, establish the site. So, again, here is, just using the reservoir as kind of our baseline, it's just located, we'll call it, above A, which is B located in that canyon area. So, next we have C. So, C is on the slope, adjacent to the homes on the westerly side of them. So, the RF objective wouldn't be achieved here, it'd only be narrowly covering some of the area adjacent to it. So, it is substantially lower than the existing facilities, so it would require a substantially higher tower to achieve that same level of coverage. And so, with the, again, with the terrain as being a common theme is one of the challenges with that, it's unlikely to be a viable site. And so, here you can see that the coverage is predominantly along the slope and down into the school, and, again, the coverage site here is located in the C circled box. Next is alternative D, which is west of the project site. So, with this particular portion, really, all the coverage would just be, again, over the school and the open field, and so it would not be achieved the necessary coverage. An additional height would be needed, as well as terrain challenges to this, making it not an appropriate alternative. And so, again, here you can see D further located west or to the left of your screen here, and showing the coverage being predominantly over the slope in the school. So, what was included following the last hearing, and following the production of the packet, there were several other sites that were identified, six other sites that were identified. Four of those sites are located here in discussions with the applicant. Staff identified whether any of those SDGNE towers that are located along Avenue La Pota could be considered to provide that necessary coverage. Unfortunately, due to the distancing here, as well as the topographical, there's challenges that make those sites not viable to provide that necessary coverage. And then, lastly, closer to the site, you can see just at the top of your screen here is the little pin in yellow, which is the proposed site. It's circled in red are these two additional sites that were considered. Again, they're elevated above that particular site, and so J is located at an adjacent to a city underground reservoir, it's a 3 million gallon freshwater reservoir. And so, there's, again, similar to the adjacency to the other reservoir, there's buried infrastructure there that make it unfeasible, and the utilities division would not be supportive of any site located adjacent to there. Additionally, to K, the K site, not necessarily that there's infrastructure in the area, but there's shadowing effects due to the topography of the site that make this site unable to provide the necessary coverage. The applicant is prepared to provide a more in-depth discussion on any of these particular sites, if the planning commission wants to discuss that. So, with that, in analysis of all the additional alternative site analysis that were proposed, the existing location is the most viable in providing the necessary coverage, is away from the V shed of the homes, and achieves the necessary coverage required for AT&amp;T to produce the project, and all while resulting in a 22-foot-high wireless facility, which would be very similar to the Verizon facility that's already at the site. So, just in consideration of the Federal Communications Commission's regulations, the FCC determines that, looks at the wireless facilities to ensure that they're not gonna result in any public health or hazards, and so that's why we have the RF report, which has been produced as part of this project, to ensure that the maximum allowed levels are not exceeded, and in this case, they are not, they're at 34% of the maximum allowed public limit, so it does fall within the necessary criteria there. And just some additional conditions that have been added and/or modified to reflect some of the feedback provided by the public, as well as the applicant, is that the current, there was a public comment with concerns about the microwave that was on the site, and so, and its proximity to the trail, and so, condition 410 is proposed to be added to the draft resolution, requiring that that be removed as part of a component of the project. The applicant has, staff has discussed that with the applicant, and they are agreeable to that. In addition to that, at the last hearing, there was concerns about the condition of the Verizon wireless site and its lack of maintenance, and so staff has required an additional modification to condition 7.11, that in addition to biannual inspections, that they provide additional photographs of when those inspections do occur, to ensure that the condition of the site is maintained appropriately, so that staff can make quick requests to make any necessary maintenance. So, with that, staff is recommending approval of the project, and that it would be exempt from SEQA, it's in compliance with the guidance from the wireless master plan, and recommending adoption of the draft resolution before you. So, with that, staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
Great, John. I do want to call the applicant up, but not yet. I would just want to poll my colleagues and see if they have any questions for you first. Any questions for staff? Scott?
So, I just want to confirm, so the FCC guidelines require that we can't, they've determined and say that we have to conclude that there's no health impacts, as long as it's below the RF limits, right? And this is only 34% of the RF limits?
Correct.
Allowed? Okay, thank you.
Karen, did you have something? And then we'll go to you, Steve.
On the condition that was added, 7.11, what is, does staff have an actual process in place, as far as the biannual inspections, as to what would be the policy and the process? If, do they turn it into the city? Do you go out with them with the inspection? How, or do they email a photo? How does this work?
With my discussions with staff is that the, upon the biannual inspection, as part of that, which would be worked into their lease, that they would be providing the necessary information to the city planner, which would, could be quickly reviewed to ensure compliance. Am I on target there? Am I, am I on target there?
Yes, the thought is that the provider or the wireless company and/or their agent would provide photo stamped or timestamped photos that are able to identify the site of the facility. If from those photos we have conditions, then me or, or staff would go out to investigate in person. So that's the intent of that condition.
Does staff periodically just go out on their own to look at these sites?
Planning staff does not typically go out independently. These, the majority of the sites are at utility facilities. So we do have city staff that are at those sites. And after the initial public hearing on this item, when that was raised, I did communicate to our utilities team to communicate with us if they do see, you know, from visual inspection of being out at those sites more regularly, issues with them. And, and with this Verizon site in particular, I have reached out to the site, to the tower manager, and they are going to be replacing the branches that were in question. We did get photos that did identify and validate the concerns that were raised by the neighbors. And so those additional branches have been ordered and will be placed on the existing facility in the next month or so.
And one more question, if you'll indulge me. Is there a record that's kept if residents in the area call in and have a complaint and they see something? Is there, is it logged in so that the planning commission or the city council could go back and look at those records?
So if, if someone is inquiring by email to a general staff member, that's a public record, but it wouldn't meet what you're looking for, Commissioner. The way to keep a, a log of complaints is to submit a complaint to our code enforcement division. That can be done either by phone or through the city's website. And yes, we do track those. And in particular, we flag if there ever are applications for sites that involve an active code enforcement action that needs to be remedied. We look for those to be remedied before an action is taken on that project.
John, who identified these alternate site locations?
It was a combination of, of staff and the applicant, but we worked together to, to locate the different sites.
Okay, so what were some of the criteria that you used to define a possibly feasible alternative?
So we looked at proximity to the existing site, something that was in the general area that could potentially provide that necessary coverage. And so that was what we were working on off of. There was no set guidance provided by the planning commission or, and through that process. And so we worked in locating those facilities.
So it seems like you could just drop a pin. That's pretty loose criteria. I, I would think maybe it had something to do with access.
We had to look at proximity to infrastructure to power the facility. We had to look at, okay, this is, this is the area that needs the necessary coverage, right? So the proposed site is the ideal site. So everything drops down from there in terms of quality of a consideration of a site. And so we try to pick locations that were, you know, uphill, downhill, you know, any, anything that could potentially be, be viable or, you know, for consideration. So in looking at and pulling further away, you know, as topography drops, we've got challenges. So really, in looking at those alternative sites, we're doing our best effort to do that now. I mean, if we basically moved that pin 50 feet down that, the fire road every single time, you know, or the access path, I mean, that wasn't something that we were, we were looking to attempt at.
Okay, that's good. Thanks.
On attachment number one, page four, 3A, that standard, the 1992 ANSA standard that sets the threshold between safety and non-hazard at 50 times below a level that the majority of the scientific community believes may pose a risk to human populations, is that at the equipment? Is that measured right at the equipment?
I'll have the applicant respond to that. So what, can you go back to that? There was an attachment?
3A, attachment number one, page four. See 3A, the Federal Communications Commission has determined.
You're looking at the resolution?
Yeah. Page four, section 3A.
Why don't, I guess the applicant? John, you wanted the applicant to answer that?
Yes.
Okay, so Gary, why don't you save that? And then, do you have anything else for staff? I'm going to ask you, John, a couple of questions. The 34% in your, in your report, where did you get that number?
It's from the RF report.
Okay, who, who does that?
The applicant provides that information.
Okay, so if I have questions about the RF report, I should ask the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Great. Next, who owns the land?
City property.
Okay, the city owns this land. Is there, has the applicant, has, they have executed a lease?
No, if, if approved, that they would then have to come before the city council to, to achieve a lease with the city.
Okay, so in order to, let me see if I have this right. In order to have this installation go forward, there needs to be approval tonight for the conditional use permit, which is just the permit itself. And, but there's a part two. The applicant will also need to enter into a lease agreement with the city and that's approved by the city council.
Correct.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of staff? Great, I'd like to.
I have one more.
Okay, Steve?
Are we also looking at the signage as part of this approval? It's on here, so I assume we are.
The signs that are part of the hazards?
Yeah, they're part of the CUP approval.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's required signage if, if the project were approved. So it's not, it's not a...
And it's all just code?
Correct.
So, okay.
Boilerplate stuff. I'd like to invite the applicant up at this time for their presentation. I'm going to ask our clerk, we have 10 minutes on the clock for them. And then after the applicant, we'll have questions for the applicant. And then I've got nine, nine speaker cards, which I'll be calling after the applicant. Okay. If you could introduce yourself, that would be great. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you. Perfect. All right. So bear with me, I might talk a little too fast, slow me down. I'm, I'm not very good with public speaking. But good evening, members of the commission and city staff. My name's Will Kazimi and I'm a project manager for Smart Link that represents AT&amp;T. And I just want to say thank you for the consideration here and taking the time to review the project. Okay, so, sorry. In the next couple of slides, I will very briefly discuss holistically what we look for when it comes to site selection. And the rest of the slides is to discuss how we got there, that's specific to this project. Part of our job is to select sites that meet what I call the fiveables when it comes to site selection. We need to make sure that it is zonable, which means meeting all the development standards and municipal code of the underlying jurisdiction. In this case, we are working with city staff and we are meeting that development standard. Picking up from this, picking up this project from a previous consultant, staff worked tirelessly with me to make sure this project's meeting the city standard. The other thing is leasable. As you mentioned, this is city-owned property, so we'll need to have a lease agreement signed between the carrier AT&amp;T and the city of San Clemente. As of right now, it is interested, that's how we got here, but again, there has to be a lease agreement. The next attributes, RF engineerable, we need to make sure the site selection will meet AT&amp;T RF engineers' coverage requirements here. And we show that via the propagation maps, which is included for the record in your packages. Constructable, to make sure the site can be built. Like John mentioned, it has, there has to be infrastructure in place reasonably nearby so we could power the site and bring in fiber. So in this case, we're having fiber here, so that's why we able to remove the microwave. Sorry, I was, I thought there was a presentation there. But we, that's why we removed the microwave, so we have telco or fiber coming into the site as well. And then also last but not least, it has to be regulatory approved, meaning we have to meet all the state, local, and federal guidelines, which in this case AT&amp;T is as To hold down further, I want to emphasize the importance of the zoning portion, which why we're all here, when it comes to site selection. As part of the criteria, AT&amp;T must demonstrate the existence of a gap in coverage in the targeted area. This doesn't necessarily imply a complete lack of service or a complete blackout, but rather the inability to provide a acceptable, acceptable level of voice and data service to its customers and first responders. Addressing this gap is crucial to maintaining reliable service. There's a common misconception that telecommunications carriers are placing sites anywhere, everywhere, but that is not the case. Building a site involves significant capital expenditure, it's typically a little bit over a million dollars now for a standard project, just like a commercial development, just like a residential development. Therefore, site selection is critically, it's very critical and we do careful, carefully analyze them. This facility, another, sorry, another criteria is to make sure that designs presented is the least visually obtrusive option. We carefully work with the city staff to make sure the design proposed is the least visually obtrusive option and meets the underlying standards by the city code. For this project, the proposed phot tree is located next to an existing approved phot tree with similar dimensions, similar height, as John mentioned. It's not in the viewshed of homes down below and the existing phot tree was not easily identified when I drove by too as well. As, as I mentioned earlier, I had entered this project, so I went out there and took a look at myself as well. Staff can attest to this, but this project is meeting the city's development centers, including findings under 17 dot 16 dot 060F, 17 dot 28 dot 070F and D. In this slide here, you can see visually, you can see a snippet of the propagation map with AT&amp;T coverage as its current state. So no AT&amp;T cell site right now. You can see we have what we call the gap in coverage here. We can easily see the targeted area in which is east of Camino Veracruz, south of Calle Saramentoso, sorry, I'm going to slaughter that one, and north of Camino del Rio. And then I'm going to just go back real quick so you can see the distinct difference. Here you can see visually a snippet of the propagation map with AT&amp;T's coverage visually showing the targeted area being covered, where would the would-be facility be. The next seven slides would John lightly touch, but I'll go in details here, time permitting. I will go over our alternative site analysis that was provided for the record. And this is with the help of the city staff, previous documents, and additional analysis that I did. But, let me see. Here's a close-up of the alternative sites, but due to visual constraint, I couldn't fit everything in there. So this is just more a zoomed-in version of the area, general area. And we go back. This is like the more broader version. Omiting Camp Pendleton. Alternative A, so alternative A is north-northeast adjacent to the existing water tank. RF subjective ring encompasses terrain, like the original proposal where the water tank location and family residentials. But due to the underground nature of the water tank, there's typically encumbered by restrictions to preserve water, the infrastructure of the water tank and the pipelines and all that stuff around it. Additionally, the water tank location drops about 40 feet in elevation and hypothetically, AT&amp;T will need a height requirement about equal to greater of 62 feet. As you can see here, RF's objective is only slightly met, just enough, just enough to provide coverage to the nominal neighbors, numbers of the adjacent homes. Alternative B is between a canyon. You can see RF's objective is not met at all. It's being obstructed by the canyons to the east and the west, and a sliver of the coverage is only touching approximately about 12 homes. The elevation between the canyon is 477 feet above ground level versus 626 feet at our proposed location. Basically, the difference between those numbers is the additional height needed just to clear the canyons and to reach our RF objective. And as John mentioned, there's topographical and ecological challenges as well. It's a habitat, they'll run into environmental issues, not just that, but infrastructure as well. Alternative C, this was, location was below the proposed water tank location between the park and the single-family homes that are situated above the two hills that are depicted similarly like a canyon. In addition to the obtrusiveness of this location, RF's objective is being partially met, but only narrowly to the west, covering just an open field. The homes above the hill to the north, south, and the rest of the area to the west are not being covered. Similarly to alternative B, the elevation here is 500 feet, about 500 feet versus 626 feet at our proposed location. The difference between those two is the additional height we need to clear. And just like every, the general area, there is again, topographical challenges as well here that will require extensive grading and excavation too. Alternative D is situated on top of a hill, but still below the homes that are located above the hill. Here RF's objective is only being met for an open field and portion of the elementary school. The homes above and surrounding are not being blanketed by RF because they're located at a higher elevation. Similarly to alternative B and C, the elevation here is 489 feet, about 490 feet versus 626 feet at our, at our proposed location. The difference between those two, it's the height we need to in order to clear, but also at the same time, it will land in the viewshed of the homes above the hill. Okay, alternative E, F, G, H, and I, a small little correction here. At the request of city staff, we were guided to vet out the locations where AT&amp;T can install their antennas onto existing SDG tower, SDGNE towers, since this area is territory of SDGNE. But they don't have any physical assets on the hillside and the nearest transmission tower, as John pointed out, is SCE owned, but they're on the other side of the canyon where, at a lower, at a much lower level where basically we'll be shooting into the canyon, which kind of defeats the purpose here. The location is greater than 300 feet, or sorry, the elevation, and these locations will not meet AT&amp;T's RF objective because of the obstruction. And then please note that any antennas attached to an existing asset like transmission towers, utility poles, the utility companies, they have a strict guideline where we're not allowed to hide it, like disguise it, put a radome on it, et cetera. It could be camouflaged to match the painting of the tower, make it look like a, like a utility structure, but it cannot be, it'll still be obtrusive than what we're proposing. Oh yeah, sorry, right on the bottom right corner, at the last hearing, because it was required about placing our structure within the camp, within Camp Pendleton. Camp Pendleton is located about over 19 miles straight line from the proposed location to the nearest access point. Hypothetically speaking, if we do assume the Marine Corps allows structures within their area of military operations, hypothetically accounting for the normost border of Camp Pendleton, it will not meet the RF objective. It's too far away.
I think we'll, if you can hang out, we're going to ask if there are questions for you, okay?
That's fine.
All right. Thanks for your presentation.
Thank you.
Who want, who has questions for the applicant? Karen, do you?
My applicant.
Okay, Scott, and then if you, I'm sorry, Steve? Yes, Scott, you don't have any, right?
When you mentioned that there's some grading and construction difficulties, I assume you're talking about the ancillary structure, not necessarily the pole itself?
Both. The pole itself needs to be in the foundation in order to be structurally sound. So you would have to dig right in there in the, to, well, I'm not a construction guy, but I would imagine it'll be about 24 feet.
But it's really the combination of the two.
Yeah, and so if it's nearby, obviously you will need a bigger footprint. But if we split them apart, the equipment enclosure itself, it's above ground, so it doesn't need any grading at all, as long as it's great, it's flat, which it is. The pole wise, you would have to dig right in there and it, it has to be engineered substantially.
How far apart can those two elements be? How far apart can those two elements be from each other?
It could be as far as possible, maybe, but that all depends on the power coming in, and most importantly, fiber. The longer the fiber route is, the lower the, the higher the latency kind of thing, where the antennas won't be talking to each other and to other network towers as well. So it'll get degraded the longer the cable runs go.
Okay, and you said you need to pull power to the facility?
Correct.
And then does it then branch over to the pole from your?
Yeah.
Your ground facility?
So we'll have the enclosure, right? We'll have the enclosure here. We'll have the power, the meter, the telco, all the stuff that goes into that equipment, the mechanical equipment enclosure. Then you have the tower right, which is right above it, a little bit on the slope. The cable runs, it will go down there.
Okay.
My question was the standard fifty times below? Is that standard measured at the equipment?
Oh, yes, when we do RF EME reports, they go off of the antennas where the antennas are located.
At the location?
At the location of the pole, not the equip, the ground equipment. The ground equipment is just mechanical, it has the batteries, the generator.
And whatever emanating the EMF, that's where they measure it?
Correct.
Okay.
And, oh, and I do want to make note to John's presentation regarding the thirty-four percent limit. The FCC guidelines is counting for worst-case scenario. Carrier, AT&amp;T and all carriers do operate way below that threshold. So what they're, the FCC reports in the nineteen ninety-six guidelines, and I think there was something else updated, so the city attorney could correct me here, but it's, it's basically off of worst-case scenario numbers, which were nowhere remotely close to those numbers.
No, just that if there's a nineteen ninety-six, we should have that in the document rather than nineteen ninety-two. So you're saying in nineteen ninety-six, there's a lower?
It, it's a telecommunications, the telecommunications act of nineteen ninety-six.
I'll just clarify real quick, the standards were set in nineteen ninety-two by the American National Standards Institute. Those are the standards that were adopt by the FCC, adopted by the FCC, and there's not a more recent update than, than those.
Okay, so you're done? All right, so my question has to do with that thirty-four percent. Can you just explain what that is?
So the thirty-four percent, it's the cumulative of the RF exposure in that area, including Verizon's equipment, and the other, if there is any communication equipments there, that's all cumulative. The thirty-four percent, it's basically, like I said earlier, it's based off the worst-case numbers, and that's what AT&amp;T will, or any wireless carrier will project that. They will run the numbers based off the worst-case numbers, which is FCC, which FCC provided, and as you can see, they, it's thirty-four percent below that. Now, in reality, it's gonna be way below that as well, because they're not, they're, AT&amp;T is not operating at full power. None, no carriers are gonna operate their cell type to full power, and just enough to cover that RF objection, or else you'll face too redundant coverage, which kind of, it's redundant. Like, so when you overlap coverage and everything, it basically becomes redundant, so there's no point of having like, let's just say, you have a light bulb here, a light bulb here shining against each other, defeats the purpose, it doesn't really light up everything else but just each other.
The, so you're saying there's a, there's a peak. Call it a hundred, and you're at thirty-four percent of the hundred, is that what you're trying to explain?
We gotta make note, the hundred is worst-case scenario.
Okay, and so you're, what you're representing is that the thirty-four percent is your high, full power, but you won't operate at that level, is that, did I understand that?
That is correct. No carriers operate full, full power.
Okay, like what percentage of power do you operate at?
That I do not know, out of the top of my head. I'll have to ask RF engineers on that one.
And then the thirty-four percent, that, that's the cumulative RF what?
Including Verizon's structure.
It does?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that was my main question. So this is including all of the surrounding admitters?
That is correct.
Okay. Can you, and then this staff is going to ask you to agree to a new condition about removing the microwave?
That is correct.
And you're agreeing to that?
Yes, like I mentioned earlier, we have fiber pulling in here, so there is no use.
So no need for it?
Yeah.
Got it, okay.
You caused me to have a question.
Great. Karen, Prescott Love, Laura, what's a question for you?
Going back to the thirty-four percent, I'm looking in a resolution, seven point six on page three. So the cellular carriers shall allow other carriers to co-locate at the cellular facility with the extension antennas. Does that increase your thirty-four percent at all, or does it remain the same if other cellular join?
Theory of math, yeah. I mean, if you add something in there, it'll increase, but let's just say if they're operating just by the minimum, they'll still be well, well below the threshold of what the FCC has set.
Do we have any more information from staff on that, as far as if we combine other?
Yeah, I can field that question, Commissioner. The framework here would be mainly a regulatory process, so again, the fact that this is on city property, that condition is a standard condition reflecting our wireless master plan that requires that when we support poles, we look for them to co-locate when possible. That's not always the case. Oftentimes, we find that co-locations might require a more intrusive end result than, than a separate facility. However, this is still on city property, so they would not automatically co-locate. They would provide a new report that reflects that and, and request an amendment to their lease and to the use permit in order to accomplish that.
Okay, so there would be a review process?
There would be, correct.
Thank you.
All right, back to me now. You weren't here last time when we were here, you seem, I don't believe you were here, there was another representative?
No, this is my first, it was my former colleague that was here, that was representing.
I recall that we had asked your former colleague to meet with the residents and talk about site locations, options, preferences. Did that happen? Do you know?
I can briefly speak to that.
Thanks.
There was, there was some coordination with some of the neighbors following the meeting, and there was a site visit with one of the residents discussing that matter.
Okay, that was it?
Correct.
One person. Do you know the results of that? How'd that go or anything?
I believe it was more informative, there was no, nothing of substance that, I believe that came from it.
No negotiation?
Correct.
All right, no, okay. Do you have anything else that you want to add in terms of your perspective on any alternatives that might be located, say, further away from the residents? Do you have any options there that you can speak to?
We did. Alternative J and K with the underground reservoir, we looked at that as well. Especially, I do want to make a note to alternative K where we mentioned that if we propose a structure there, it'll cause a shadowing effect. That shadowing effect is, let me tell, explain that to you guys. Sorry, I got like this whole notes. Yeah, so these, it was confirmed that by the city's water department that it's the reservoir, reservoir nine facility. It's a three-million-gallon freshwater tank with influent, influent pipes of telemetry that runs around completely that whole area. So additionally to that, the proposed height does not meet RF objective, and that's because of the, the shadowing effect. Basically, a structure that is only twenty-two feet tall will not clear the gradually rising elevation here versus where we propose, our proposed location. So as you can see, it kind of goes gradually up the hill. Basically, what's gonna happen is the RF or the antennas, it's gonna shoot, but it's gonna bounce off the ground, which will degrade that RF frequency. So that location will not work as well because of the.
What height would you have to have your monopole at for it to work?
We would need to be greater than the high limit of what the city's placed here.
What, do you know what that, do you have a number?
I do not have the number on that one on top of my head, but if, and just in theory, if we're looking at the ground, if we go on the, by the water tank, which was sixty-two feet up in the ground, and then to clear the shadowing effect to get into the houses to the east, you'll substantially higher, up probably more than sixty feet, I would guess.
Yep, okay. All right, any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Stand by, we may call you back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, I'm gonna open this up to the public for their comments. Like I said, I've got nine cards, if anyone else decides they want to speak, just bring up a speaker card and we'll recognize you. What I'm gonna do is, first of all, explain, it's a three minutes for every, every public comment, so we'll have the little timer there for you. And then I'm gonna call up three at a time. If all three can come up to the front, just have a seat there in the front row, and then I'll just keep calling you, but you'll be, you'll be queued up, and I'll just keep it moving. So the first three speakers, I've got Mike Hughes, and then Mike, following Mike will be Robert Locke, and then following Robert will be Derek Miller, and then Megan Miller. So, Mike Hughes? So for everyone that I called, if you don't mind kind of getting organized up here so we can just keep it moving, that would be great. You're Mike?
Yes.
Welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Thank you. Yeah, so I'm Mike Hughes, I live next door to the existing and the proposed installations. I was here seven months ago at the first meeting, and I raised my concerns then about the current horribly maintained infrastructure, and I voiced my opposition to allowing another tenant to do the same thing. That's because the current tenant is just, it's not maintaining its infrastructure, and nobody seems to be holding them accountable. I heard a mention of leaves today, ordering new leaves, but yes, half the plastic leaves, hundreds of them are, have fallen off, they're polluting the ground. Parts of the infrastructure are actually hanging off, right? So it's not about leaves. It's no longer properly, properly fastened, and it's just blowing in the wind, right? So this proves to me that the site is just not being expected or maintained, and to me, nobody cares, right? So aesthetics are, are one thing, right? It's a complete eyesore up there, but that's not gonna hurt anybody. But parts are hanging off, maybe someday something will fall off, and that's a safety hazard, right? That can actually hurt somebody. So I brought this up seven months ago, nothing's really changed, as far as I can see. Somebody said they ordered some new leaves, that's great, but it appears to me the first tenant's just not being held accountable for anything, except for probably paying the rent, right? So I think it's irresponsible to let another tenant do the same thing, even with a greater risk, because this site is gonna have live electricity connected to it. I didn't hear that mentioned in the presentation, but it will. The current site does not. So I strongly encourage you or whoever is responsible to learn how to hold the first tenant accountable, and then remediate the existing site before you let anybody else on. That's, that's what I ask. The, one other question I have, I saw the present, I saw the presentation about alternate sites, and I was looking at the power towers going up, and it's funny, because every day I hike up there and I go to a certain power tower, the one that was just not included on the plot. And when I'm standing on the ground, I have a complete viewshed of everything they want to cover in the valley. So it just seems odd to me that, why didn't they include that tower? It's existing infrastructure, somebody put an antenna on that power tower, nobody's gonna care. You don't have to put leaves on it. So I just kind of questioned the alternate site analysis, it's like, why didn't you include that power tower? It's got a perfect viewshed. And just so you know about me, I'm retired now for a few years. I worked thirty, well, many, many years, my entire career in the wireless industry. Many years as an engineer and a manager, twenty-plus years as, as an executive. So I do have a lot of knowledge on this. So I've just, I really would question the alternate site analysis of what you didn't look at versus what you did. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Robert Locke, followed by Derek Miller.
Sorry I'm underdressed, but that's one of the reasons.
No, you're welcome.
It's one of the reasons I moved to San Clemente.
That's right.
Yeah. So I've been twenty-three years on Costa Arisco. I spend five days a week in a cardiac cath lab, ablating people's hearts with radiofrequency energy. And I can tell you, radiofrequency energy, I can burn a hole through your heart. And it's not about the initial exposure, it's about over time. I have kids, we all have grandkids, right? My kids play on that hill, my kids go up on that hill. I purposely didn't move to Toledo because I didn't want to live under the power wires. Now, they say they're safe, but there was a big fight about where everybody's going, and this and that, and so on and so forth. Everything is good in the cardiac cath lab until it's not good. And I don't want my kids to find out that the experts were wrong. The experts were wrong here, guys. Would you want it in your backyard? I've been on that street, like I said, twenty-three years. I was told Costa Arisco, when I bought, would never go through. The top of our street was gonna be a mountain walkway. Well, after investigating, speaking to the city, well, no, it was designed as a thoroughfare to get more of the traffic out of there. I was lied to, all right? It's what it is. I, we spoke to the city about getting speed bumps, because I don't know if you've ever been on Costa Arisco, but if you haven't, you should take a drive down it, because it's a great slalom course for skateboarders and kids doing about seventy miles an hour, blowing through two stop signs that will, by the way, are not a suggestion. You're supposed to stop. Somebody's kid's gonna get killed on that street. They told us we couldn't put in speed bumps because the fire department couldn't access the homes quick enough. Well, now there's one that's just beyond Toledo, it still didn't happen. Now you're telling me you're gonna put a tower, which, by the way, doubles your radiofrequency energy by having two towers. I don't buy the thirty-four percent, I work with radiofrequency every day. It's dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Derek Miller, followed by Megan Miller, and then Ally Molina.
Hi neighbors, I'm Derek Miller, been in San Clemente for over two decades, and I'm certainly opposed to this cellphone tower for numerous reasons, which I'll list now. But in, in prior meetings that I've attended, prior city council meetings, I've heard city council members state that they were not gonna approve multiple cellphone towers on the site. They didn't want it to look like the hill, the telecommunications hill overall. I think it's off of Caeda, so we've all seen it, it's above the high school. And so I'd like the city council to keep their word on that. The area is zoned open space, so people are around this area, they're hiking. They use, maybe they're not supposed to, but they use that asphalt street to go right by the water tower, right by the, the existing cellphone tower, and right by the signs that say, you know, keep, stay away, dangerous levels of radiation. There's kids playing there all the time. The leaves are scattered, as Mike had mentioned, the, the, the site is a mess, it's not properly maintained. I don't think we should allow our neighbor, this residence neighborhood, guys, I don't think we should allow our neighborhoods to become, you know, an industrial-style cellphone tower factory. It's a neighborhood, that's what, people live there, we've got open space, that's what it's been designed for, and putting more cellphone towers, I don't think is the appropriate use of the space. Couple other things, I don't believe there's been proper signings displayed about this, this cellphone tower since the meeting was adjourned last time. I don't know where the, the signs were, but they're not, they're not there. I also don't think we should allow a wireless company to dictate the look, feel, and aesthetics of our neighborhood. This is San Clemente, we all love living here. Why should AT&amp;T decide for you how, how the neighborhood should look? This is obviously a monetary decision if you choose to make it, but I would think the combined taxes that are being paid by the residents dwarf the, the financial consideration that AT&amp;T, AT&amp;T will give the city. There was some talk about it not being within the viewshed. You guys are welcome to come to my house, I'll serve you refreshments, and you can see the existing cellphone tower from my front door. You can see it from upstairs bedrooms, you can see it from my driveway. So it is certainly within the viewshed of multiple residents. I'm a little concerned that we're using standards from nineteen ninety-two to, to determine health and, and the appropriateness of having these things around people. Think about yourselves in nineteen ninety-two, think about who had cellphones, who didn't, I didn't even have one. And so that, that's certainly a concern. I understand, robotically, you have to follow these safety standards, but you guys are humans making decisions that affect other humans, so you can certainly. so you can certainly consider that. Thank you so much time.
Thank you for your, being here tonight and your comments. Megan Miller?
Hi, everyone, how are you? Thanks for having us tonight. There, my name is Megan Miller. I've been a resident in San Clemente for over 20 years. We were adjourned last time we came to this meeting. We had many other people here in the room that could not make it tonight due to work obligations, some of them being our HOA board members who are very much opposed to this project, and people that actually live across the street. And like my husband said, you can see these wireless towers clearly from my front doorstep, so it is false information to say that it is not within view. I wanted to talk a little bit about what happened 10 years ago, because it is very important. There's a lot of history and background with this site. There were promises made to us as residents that the city has not upheld if they go through and approve this project. One of them being that they were not gonna put more than two towers on this location. With, now, if it's gonna be a co-location site, the concern was the RF radiation, the accumulation of it. We do live across the street, and that'll be a 24-hour-a-day, 7-day-a-week exposure. If you do look at the report that you all have in your hands, the emissions report is inaccurate. It is actually dated back in 2021, so it's three years old. And if you read it, it is not showing you the accumulation of all the RF radiation if they do make this a co-location tower. That was promised to us, they were not gonna do that back in 2014. The city did promise that to us. You can watch the video, I watched it the other night. Also, I wanted to point out that the current Verizon tree, you guys can actually skip this part, this picture here, because that was a promise they made to us that they didn't uphold, was to redo this entire entrance and structure. They never touched it, by the way, that last picture. This is the current tree. We have things hanging off of it. Those are the antenna sleeves that are falling down. They're falling down to the ground. There's leaves falling all over the place. In 2014, when we spoke to the city attorney, the city attorney said that if the council believes that the evidence demonstrates that the decision to allow the Verizon cell tower was a bad decision, it is not obligated to compound the situation by allowing an additional cell phone tower. I don't know if that law still stands, or that right still stands, but you guys, the city does own this land. You do have the say in what we do with this land. It is not, it's, it has been zoned as open area. People walk these trails daily. Lots and lots of people. In the beginning, when I first found out about this project, there were over 250 signatures collected on a petition. People that hike these trails that do not want the cell phone tower in their open space, in their open land. So I hope that that is something that's taken into consideration. The report that I was referring to, that is dated 2021, it references other carriers, but does not specify details on the adjacent Verizon facility, nor the existing equipment and the power levels. The report appears to be deficient, and the date of the report does not match the date of the project drawings. And this should be a serious concern for approving this project. I'll wrap it up, right, real quick. Commissioner Costco, when I emailed you, you asked me what we would propose to be acceptable. And my proposition is that this tower is moved to a different location, because it seems that the alternative site analysis seems to be, like they cherry picked kind of the alternative sites, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ally Molina, followed by Jackie Whitney, followed by Greg Fuller.
Hi, my name is Ally, and I'm a newer arrival to San Clemente. I arrived here in 2020. And I really can't do any better than what you've already heard from my fellow neighbors here. But I do want to ask, can we please look at how the heck is the cumulative or the combined RF measured? I don't want to have it be hearsay. I don't want to take somebody's word for it. How does AT&amp;T know what RF Verizon is putting out? And how does Verizon know what RF AT&amp;T is putting out? So I'd like to know more about that. And then also, how is that gonna be monitored going forward? Maybe RF is measured at one percentage one day, and it's a different percentage the next day. And I certainly would be concerned that the standards that are being used from FCC are from 1992, so please take this into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments tonight. Jackie Whitney?
I'm Mark, I'm her husband.
Okay.
I'm subbing for her.
Okay, welcome.
Can I give you a presentation? You can, this is just a little visual to accompany my chat. I live across the street too, in the cul-de-sac. I was at the, I think there's a big miscommunication here as far as the alternate site process. There was not one person there, there was five or six of us that showed up. It was different people. I think there's been a turnover in who's representing the cell tower, the front person. But, so maybe that's where the miscommunication started. But those alternate sites, we'd never picked those alternate sites. That sounds very foolish to have the site down in the valley. We would never discuss that. Or we do not want antennas on the trail. That trail's used by a lot of people. So on my, one thing I did propose is if we would push the antenna 30 yards up the trail and off the trail, so that we don't have to look at it, you don't have this hardware on the trail. And I showed you on the map, there's the existing dot, the proposed, and then a compromise, you know, 30, 25, 30 yards further up the hill, and they can, that's a slope, so they can put it at whatever height they want. Just it seems common sense that if the existing site works, the proposed site works, that would be a good site too. As a compromise.
Okay, is that your, is that all your comment?
No, I have to say, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you for preparing us, we appreciate it. And everyone has a copy of it. Okay.
Commissioner, if I could get one of those copies once we're done with it, so I can put it at the back of the room so the public can inspect.
We've got extras. We're gonna get that to you, Jonathan. On this next card, I've got two speaker names. Are you Greg?
Greg, yes.
You're gonna, okay, are you, okay. And then Kimberly Gaff, and then Mark Whitney. If you guys can be ready, we'll take you next.
Good evening, council.
Welcome.
My name's Greg Fuller. I live across the street from the existing tower that's there now. And I have a view of it from my second story on my home. I can see it when I get on the driveway, when I hit the street, I can see it, and I can see from the second level. I haven't heard one neighbor complain about they don't have cell phone service in the neighborhood. So I don't know why we have to have our neighborhood be another communication area for other future neighborhoods. Because we don't have a problem with what's going on in our neighborhood. I don't agree with it. So as far as I'm concerned, I'm against any building of any new towers in that neighborhood, period. None, zero. And that's all I have to say.
All right, well, thank you for your comments and coming out tonight. Kimberly, followed by Mark?
Thank you. I appreciate your time tonight. My name's Kimberly Graff. I'm a 20-year resident of the neighborhood. I live down the streetaways. And I have five ABles to talk about. Does it sound familiar? They're different than his ABles. The first one is walkable. Those trails are designed to be walkable. I've walked over 4,000 miles on those trails in my 20 years in the neighborhood. And this, my second Able is repeatable. This is a repeatable argument. I stood before the city council 10 years ago, similar to what my neighbors have said. And the city promised us there would be no more cell towers built in our neighborhood. Unpredictable is my third Able. Windstorms blowing down fake leaves are unpredictable. They do not happen on a biannual schedule. Biannual inspections will not be enough to protect the environment of the open space and keep it clean. Able, just a simple Able. AT&amp;T, and more important, the planning commission, is able to choose a different site for a cell tower. And the question is, do we even need a cell tower? When we moved to that neighborhood, I had Verizon. I had zero cell service. I called up Verizon, they said, oh, you're in a known dead zone. We can cancel your contract. I canceled my contract, and I went with AT&amp;T. Every cell carrier does not have to have coverage in every area. Inheritable, that's my fifth Able. Who is the open space for? Is it for the residents? Or is it for AT&amp;T to make money? What legacy do you, the planning commission, and does the city want to leave? Again, it's inheritable. People will come after us who want to use this beloved open space. And I would ask for your strong vote of no on this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments tonight. Mark Whitney, did we? You're gonna take his spot? That's okay, welcome.
He wanted to come up and talk, so I let him go. I just want to say, you know, we have such great neighbors. Of course, you know, I live right there with everybody. And we love our neighborhood. We're very concerned to keep it a very home, homie place for us, our kids, our grandkids. Having another tower there is just something I don't think we need. We have AT&amp;T, we have great service. I've never had a problem, you know? I don't know any of our neighbors that have a problem. Like Kim just mentioned, does every cell company have to have coverage? What they share. Somebody has their tower up there, they have it somebody else. Everybody has their little area they can make money off of. We enjoy our trails. The, that tree that's there right now, that Mike was mentioning from Verizon, I mean, what a joke. It's so sad that those leaves are falling off, they're on the ground, they're going into the ocean. We want to preserve our oceans. I mean, none, all of this comes down to our ocean, and we don't need to have this electronic garbage year after year after year building up. I mean, what's gonna happen in the future? I mean, you here as a planning commission, you give your CUPs with conditions. We'd like to see you take care of this. After this meeting, everybody's happy, they walk away. It never gets looked at. The city doesn't go up there. Do they take a look? Are they doing what their CUP said to take care of this area? It's not being taken care of. And, you know, the more towers we get up there, the more problems we have, the more mess we have. I don't believe that that's gonna be taken care of. It hasn't proven so far that this is happening. And we're the ones that have to live with it. Everybody gives the approval, A&amp;T, TNT, or whoever is getting the approval to put their tower up, they're happy, they're making their money, they're walking away. You guys give the approval, they're happy, you gave them the approval. But we're the people actually living there. We're the people that walk the trails, we're the people that enjoy it, and we're left with the garbage. So I would please have you think about this and vote no. To move that tower, it would be great if they could do it by the dump somewhere. I don't know if that, that was one of those areas, maybe by La Plata. There's nobody out there. Can that possibly done and be done in that location? But I wish you'd say no and protect our neighborhood. We love where we live. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments tonight. Is there anyone else that wants to speak to this? That was our last speaker card. Okay, fine. First of all, to the neighbors and all of you, this is a public hearing, and it doesn't work if there's no public here. So I want to thank you for taking your evening and bringing your concerns and comments and preparing them tonight and sharing those. Really appreciate that. Okay, now I'm gonna turn to my colleagues. Do we have, does anyone want to?
It's me.
Yes?
We do need to allow for the three-minute rebuttal from the applicant.
Yeah, I was just gonna turn to my colleagues. Be thinking if you have questions for the applicant, because I'm gonna call him up for his rebuttal. And then we can maybe, after the rebuttal, I want to see if you have questions, and then we can move into discussion. So, Mr. Applicant, did you wish to speak for three minutes to address the concerns that you heard tonight? Great.
Hi again, guys. So I heard everybody. Thank you for voicing it out. I mean, that's why we're all here, it's part of our duty. I do want to say regarding the miscommunication about, I think it was, sorry, I messed this up here. Either Mr. Hughes or Mr. Locke reported that five or six people showed up at that walk. I wasn't privy to that, so I really can't say anything, but I'll take the word for them as well. Regarding the EME report that was based off 2021, we don't have a problem with updating it. It's just, this project's been going on for a while, even a previous vendor had it. Usually our antenna design, the antenna aspect of it, doesn't change. The design of the structure might change, the location might change, all that might change, but the actual equipment that's gonna go on the pole does not change. But again, we're more than happy to put it as a condition where we could provide a updated report, cumulative as well, make it clearly delineate to show that as well. Regarding the drawings that are not updated, or they get updated with the antenna, or with the RF report, the drawings, like I said before, they get updated constantly. Either something gets moved, or something gets like realigned, some cable gets around somewhere else. That causes the drawings to be updated, which you see and you date on it. So as the project goes, there's iterations going on, which does not necessarily mean we need to update the RF report, because there is no changes or modification to the proposed antennas. Regarding the ASA, this was worked with the city staff as well in conjunction of spotting the location. So it wasn't just pinpointed everywhere. Regarding the transmission towers, I've actually was up in, I think was called Campus Point or Compass Point. I, the lines, just the transmission tower that I saw, like I pointed out earlier, it's on the other side of the canyon. And it's a significantly lower elevation. Again, if we locate there, we can't put it on top of the transmission tower, even though it's not gonna clear the canyon. They'll just hit the canyon. I can't speak on behalf of Verizon on their, the way they're maintaining their structure. It's a code enforcement issue. But I know for my six years, been working with AT&amp;T solely on this team, we haven't, I have never came across someone coming up, like, hey, your branches are falling or anything. Maybe in the desert where we had the severe storms, all that. But even then, it was immediately rectified, right when it was known. The five ABles, which is a good touch, that was nice. And again, I just do want to note that the dumpster area, I know the landfill that Ms. Whitney was talking about, is far away. It won't meet our objective coverage there. Again, I just want to point out, our objective is basically to the east, towards that way.
Thanks, if you could just, appreciate your rebuttal there to public comments so that there is a response from you, that's helpful. But I want to ask my colleagues if they have follow-up questions for you now. Karen, any follow-up questions for the applicant?
I think you already addressed the fact that it seems like the first speaker mentioned that the area hasn't improved, and it's similar to what we dealt with several months ago. Have you actually been out to the area?
I've driven past it, and I was up by Campus Point.
And did you?
Campus Point, sorry.
And so you walked, you didn't get out and walk the area, look at?
I did not walk the trail, no.
And then according to the federal commission's FCC, that determines the 34%, I decided to pull it up on my phone, on the PDF. It doesn't exactly address cell phone towers. So I've been, it's 108 pages. And it talks, it mentions by exposure, six minutes, 30 minutes, but it's not specific. Do you have anything more specific in this 108 pages that you could show us or direct us to?
I do not, no. But our RF, the RF report that will be updated and that was provided will conclude just specifically for this site as well. And it will detail, I guess, the federal government's thresholds.
Okay, so when we look at that, it would be in the discussion on, A, on new RF exposure guidelines. But again, this was dated back in 1992. And it goes for several pages, about one through nine. Again, it doesn't really address what we're talking about here. So I would like to see some more specifics on that. And that's all I have.
Okay, Scott, did you have any follow-up questions for?
Yeah. Why are you guys proposing this? What initiated it? Do you look at your map and see that you think there's a hole in coverage? Or is it based on complaints from customers?
Combination of pretty much data, everything. So complaints come in, they're like, hey, we don't have any service, what's going on? Or lack of speed, and especially everybody's working from home Or lack of speed, and especially everybody's working from home, or on their phones, or their Teslas are talking to other IoT-type of devices. Basically, that goes in, and AT&amp;T's RF engineers or data centers, they collect that information. All data analytics, they run it, and they'll see basically heat maps of where, where's the congested areas or where the areas are lacking reliable coverage. There, from there, the RF engineers, the supercomputers will pump it out, be like, hey, this is the location that we need to target. They, AT&amp;T, or the carriers, will reach out to consultants like me to be like, hey, find this site. We have this area gap right here, we need to bring service in. And that also includes demand as well. When people driving by, walking by, in their homes, using it in the buildings and everything, that will cause, that basically that device will speak to AT&amp;T's network, like, hey, there's lack of, you know, service. Or the telemetry or the algorithms are showing that, hey, the data is not, not very reliable. The speed is not up there. It takes a long time for the device and the tower to communicate. All of that goes into the play, and that's where RF engineers are like, hey, we need to target this area. And that's like the most simplest, easiest way I could explain that.
Okay, thank you. When you guys update this and you talk about cumulative RF, how do you ascertain the RF impacts from other towers, other equipment?
We ask for their, basically RFDS, which is called the radio frequency data sheet.
Okay.
They're, don't quote me on this, but I think they have to provide it when it comes to, when we come, when it comes to EME reports.
Okay.
Or requested EME reports.
Thank you, no further questions.
Do you have any? None of the applicant, okay. The one gentleman, I think he was our first speaker, talked about, the one that had all the experience in your industry, that he thought there was a power tower that had a clear line of sight to your service area. Are you familiar with what he's talking about?
I do not.
You're not?
No.
Is that something you're open to looking at?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. What is your reaction to the comments about children playing on the trail and walking trail and all the rest? What was your, what's your reaction to that?
Are we going to personal opinions here?
No, I'm asking you, is this a suitable site, given that it's an active open space area with hiking? Is that an appropriate site, given that use?
It is, because we, all carriers have cell sites pretty much everywhere. We have it at parks, you have it on schools. It's, it's the, it's the way of life now. As more people use it, more data goes up in the air and all that, that drives up demand. And this location is the most feasible location. There was concerns about why not go towards that, those other houses. Well, fortunately, we'll be in the same situation where we can't place it in someone else's backyard over there. So this location is, meets all the development choir code, the standards, meets the city's wireless master plan as well. And it's, that's all I could say about that.
And then, what is your maintenance process as far as if you do this mono broadleaf structure with respect to inspecting it, maintaining it? What's, what's the standard operating procedure?
Other than in case of emergencies, when sites go down, you have to be there automatically. It's six to eight, every six to eight weeks, the techs, AT&amp;T techs go out there to make their normal maintenance, to check on the equipment, to check everything, if everything's working in working order. So if there is like graffiti, if there is like infrastructure failure, I guess you want to call that, then they'll report that up to their chain of command or their, their higher-ups and put a ticket in or get that out there to get it resolved as soon as possible.
Mm-hmm. I'm not, maybe this is in the report, but do you have, is there a proposed, I guess, barrier around this or fence around your project?
Not on the pole, but the, the equipment closure is within the existing water tank.
So the pole itself would be accessible?
In theory, it would be.
Why in theory, why not in practicality?
I'm trying to think, if we build a fence around it, it'll lead into the trail or it'll become more intrusive?
I see, okay. Do you think, no, never mind, that's for Verizon, okay. Does anyone, yeah, do you have a question? Great, so one more, one more round.
So you saw the photo of the tree with the leaves falling off?
I did. It's unacceptable.
Okay, but that would not necessarily affect the equipment if the tree, if the leaves are falling off, right? So under the scenario that you, you represented us, that wouldn't necessarily get anyone's attention. And obviously, it didn't do much on this other tower, because it's continuing, I guess it's continuing to look like that, right? So what are the maintenance people looking for? I mean, it's primarily the equipment, not the aesthetic value, I guess, of the structure.
The only thing I could say, they should be looking at that. I mean, anybody go out there, it's their asset, so they'll look at, make sure everything's in working order, including the aesthetics and the pole itself, to make sure nothing's falling. Let's just say hypothetically, the branches fall, they'll go into the equipment, or there's RAUs on the antennas, that will basically kind of, let's just say hypothetically, will cover it, and it will cause it to overheat. So I'm just giving scenarios here. That's what, the only way I could think of, other than eyeballing it, be like, hey, you know what? This looks odd, let me go ahead and put, report this in.
Okay, thank you.
All right. We may recall you, but for now, thank you for being here and answering all the questions.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any other follow-up questions for staff before we move into discussion? Did you have staff questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
City Attorney. So what's our, what kind of flexibility do we have here with this issue?
So federal law is a little limiting when it comes to how we can regulate wireless facilities. We can, of course, make findings with regards to our municipal code and follow what's in our municipal code. But as we've already discussed, we are limited in, say, considering the health effects, which we've already discussed. We are also, a decision should not effectively prohibit wireless capabilities as well. So, but of course, you can make your decision within, you know, the confines of our findings as, as long as it's supported by substantial evidence.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, that just triggered.
Yeah.
Also for the City Attorney. I also walk up there extensively. Does that put me in a position where I, I can't make a decision on this? I mean, it's an open space.
Right. I think in that case, you would be affected just as much as anyone else is. So I think that is acceptable. Do you feel that you can still make a fair decision tonight?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, okay, just disclosure then.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for staff.
Okay.
Either, either side of the room. I don't feel like we have moved any closer than where we were seven months ago as far as the property itself looking to be somewhat abandoned with the falling trees. Where, why hasn't it, what, what were the requests of the, the current leasing as far as trying to clean this up and keeping it maintained? Where were we?
Commissioner, if I can ask for just a minute or so, I believe that I have a hidden slide from that presentation. I'm going to try to grab that image to share, and then I can respond to the question.
While you're doing that, we're just going to take a quick, just a, someone, just give everyone here just an opportunity to just take, stretch their legs, take a quick break. Okay. So we'll just be in recess for just a few minutes.
Yeah, I think that that's the only one that I can think of that he's referring to.
Tamara, you can pull that up.
Call is back to order. Thanks for the little opportunity to take a break. And where we last left was, Jonathan, you had a slide you wanted to share.
Thank you, Chair. So responding to Commissioner Prescott Luthler's inquiry, this is just, there's a couple images here pulled from an email I received. The most recent correspondence is September 18th, so about two weeks ago. American Tower manages the facility, Verizon's the operator. And so this first one just shows the, the site of the existing facility. And Tamara, we can go to the next image. So they provided a photo of the, the current situation. So they had their contractor go out to the site, provide that photo, as well as the simulation to the right. And the following is the same, just from a further distance. So they sent that in on September 18th, and, and I confirmed, yes, please proceed with this work. So they, they do have, give me one moment to confirm the name. They're working with Solar Communications International to do this work. And I, as of the beginning of this meeting, did request a more current update. But about two weeks ago is when we gave the authorization to proceed with this indicated work here.
Karen, did that answer your question?
And it was seven months ago, excuse me. It was seven months ago, and this was, this came in on September. Did we have any communication with them in that seven months? Why did it take so long?
Yeah, we did have some along the way. We, well, so first, connecting with the correct party. So we connected through landlord relations at ATC. And I was referred through a couple different people before getting to the correct contact. And at that point, I provided the, the lease and the section of the lease that requires them to provide updates. So they, they agreed to make those changes. Prior to this one, they sent some photos as well of, of the trunk, which does appear to still be in good condition as a faux eucalyptus tree. And so there have, have been some communications back and forth over that time. But not until, yes, two weeks ago to, did they confirm the company that would be doing the work.
I appreciate staff's due diligence on this, and I'm glad the trunk is saved. So that does, no fault on yours. You did, you did as best as you could, I understand. That does answer my question, thank you.
Okay. Other questions for staff? Yeah, Gary.
Jonathan, can you put that slide back up, the first one you had on? Get lost. There you go. Okay. So what we see there, that's the entrance off Costa Rica or the street's name. That's city entrance, right? Access to the, that's asphalted driveway?
Correct.
Okay. Where's the trailhead to the Foothill Ranch Trail?
It's.
Southwest.
Yes. So the access is from the same spot. So it's a, it's a, the city has utility trail access, but it is open for pedestrian purposes as well.
It says that? Because if you look at the map here, there's also an entrance down here. And what I'm thinking is, people do use our driveway, but the actual trailhead, and even when it sends you directions to the trailhead, it sends you to the southwest portion. And it even says Foothill Ranch Ridge Line Trail. And if you look at all the asphalt that goes all the way up to the microwave tower, I think people have just kind of come across the driveways and have sort of made their own trail, because there's even a small trail going up. So my thinking here was, if there are complaints about being too close to the RF, maybe we should control that driveway more, and people should access the trailhead. I know it'd be inconvenient, but it would, it would get rid of the complaint of being too close to the RF.
I turned off my microphone.
Because if you look on trails in San Clemente, it, it doesn't show you to go up the driveway. It shows you to enter the trailhead.
I hear your comment. So in the background, I'm going to take a look at the track map, the underlying track map, and see if we have specific discussion of what rights are permitted under easement for that space, and I can provide that detail.
Do you have other questions?
That's it.
Jonathan, sorry to distract you from doing that homework. I just was wondering if you could provide some color or commentary on the public comment regarding the past promises of no more than two towers? Can you, do you understand that reference?
I do, yeah. So the Planning Commission and Council approved the initial facility in 2012. That was the Verizon facility. There was a subsequent request in 2014 for an AT&amp;T facility that was approved by the Planning Commission. The Council called that item up. They effectively appealed it on their own for review and took under consideration a variety of public comments and questions related to that. They ultimately moved to approve that facility. It was a 401 approval. However, the lessee in that case was also AT&amp;T, but they did not move forward with construction. There was notes within the minutes that they said after the second facility that they felt that they would be disinclined to enter into any further leases beyond the two facilities. So there is, of course, only one facility at this location currently. And those minutes can be used for reference, but certainly are in no way binding. Like, the current Council could make a different determination as to whether they would be supportive of a second facility or any other number.
Okay. And then, can you just give us an understanding of who the landlord? So apparently, you're saying for the Verizon facility, ATC is the technical landlord there?
No.
Not the city? Or can you explain that?
Thank you. So the city is still the landlord. There are, in the telecom industry, there's been a transition towards a lot of the carriers preferring to function as lessies or as subtenants, essentially. And so there are tower companies that will be the primary contact, primary lessee of the facility. And in some of these cases, there was mass assignments. So Verizon, several years back, went through kind of a nationwide assignment of leases to American Tower. So they kept their equipment on those towers. But then, American Tower took over responsibility for things like facility issues, et cetera, code compliance issues. And so that's the case. The city, however, is still the landlord of that facility.
Okay, so you're interacting with American Tower, not Verizon?
Correct.
And then, so whatever conditions of approval that apply to that facility are, I guess, now on ATC to comply with, but it's the city's responsibility to enforce it? Would that be, how would that work in the case of the AT&amp;T? Are you, if the, if the city entered into a lease, would it be through an intermediary, or would it be directly with the operator?
It could be either way.
Okay, it's not, that's in the future. It's not, that's not before us.
Correct. And use permits run with the land. And so, same with, a different scenario, alcohol. At a restaurant, a different operator comes in. The question is the use, not necessarily the business that's doing that use.
Yep, okay, okay. And then one last thing. This is city open space, it's zoned as open space. And I know that cell towers are a permitted use, correct, in open space?
Correct, with a conditional use permit.
Okay. Do you, does the city have any, I know that it won't be in their zoning code, but is there any place within the city's policy or general plan that would, that would talk to the compatibility of the open space and the cell tower? For example, sometimes when we have a commingling of compatible uses, there are footnotes that say, with these, understanding that there's separation. Or, I'm just wondering if we have something like that that would say, yes, cell tower is compatible with the conditional use permit. In the, and so, in such that it is a, that there's a determination to be made of compatibility. Meaning, all open space, all open space areas are not created equal. Some are quite vast, and others are more compact. And, you know, maybe in a vast open space area where there's no, no access, no, no, no one's around, that's a compatible use for cell towers. But in a more active open space area, can we, can we make the case that that's not compatible?
I understand the question. Give me a moment to-
Yep, yeah, 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 yep, yep. While you're doing that, I wanted to put my cards on the table and move us kind of into discussion and give you guys my thoughts. And then we can play off of that. My thought is, I'm leaning towards continuing this tonight with a couple of follow-up items. One would be direction to the applicant to do a community outreach and thoroughly vet all alternative locations. And that would be one deliverable. There would be another deliverable with respect to, and I don't expect you to do this tonight, Jonathan, but this compatibility of open space. Some analysis there, if we can actually make a finding that there is not, that there's a conflict with that compatibility. And I am leaning also towards requesting at the next hearing that the staff not only return with the resolution that they have included tonight, but in addition, one more resolution for our consideration, which would be a denial of the application. So I would like to, my motion would be to direct staff to create a denial of application resolution and come up with all the proper findings to do that, based on the public testimony we had tonight, which would include, but not limited to, proper maintenance, access to the facility, i.e. there's no fence around the pole, the frequency with, and the intensity of the use of that space with public access. Also, the alternative site analysis could be included in that. And whatever, whatever other appropriate findings that the staff would think should go in that. So that if, when we, this comes back, we would, that would be in the packet.
If that's a motion, I would second that.
Okay, I wasn't quite, I mean, I don't know. I wanted to give everybody, I'd like a discussion.
I'd like the city attorney to speak to the, the feds kind of have a little bit of us by their hands. It's one of those situations where the state has supreme, you know, zoning, is trying to take over the local zoning. The feds, it's very hard to turn it down unless you find out that there's a health hazard. And they've already set up, I'd like to have the city attorney mention, or talk about that.
I guess, I don't think we-
Here's what I'm saying.
I don't think we need to talk about that.
Yeah.
I think it's funny what we're saying. If there's plenty of other reasons, based on what we're hearing and what we're seeing, even where it says the proposed antennas do not create adverse visual impacts to the surrounding area or to the city at large, as determined by the city's design review committee. I mean, that, that alone, based on, well, a couple of things. First of all, you can see it from these homes. You can see it when you're walking, when you're walking. Yeah, you can see the tree, which, these trees, they don't look like trees. I don't, I don't care what you say.
When you walk next to it, you don't, but from, down from the street.
You could, when you're driving on the freeway, you can say, oh, there's a, there's an antenna. There's a tower right there. It's, whatever. I mean, we, we could talk about that. But the fact that, there are a couple of things, that's one of them. So I think it does have a visual impact. And, you know, beyond that, just looking at these alternative sites, to me, I'm not convinced that this thing was vetted properly and with the involvement, some involvement of the neighbors. So generally, I agree with where you're coming from on this. But I think maybe there is a good site up there. I'm not convinced that, that it was really investigated the way it needs to be. Because that was the direction that we gave them, is to try to find a better site. And I've been up there, and there's a lot of, again, you know, you can, you can sort of visualize grade change as you're walking, because it gets more strenuous, right, as you go up? And there's a lot of places up there that I believe could be reasonable sites that wouldn't have the impact.
I don't disagree, but I'm wondering, what is our liability?
Well, again, we're not, we're not saying it's dangerous.
No, our li, I'm not talking about danger, but the FCC has certain rules set up, that the applicant can then file a complaint with the FCC, saying, we're not allowing them to serve their customers in their blank area. Are we, is there a liability there?
So I generally cannot comment on city liability in a public setting. I can, going back to the factors that I explained earlier, there are, you're absolutely right. There is a general policy from the federal government that local agencies should be supporting wireless facilities. And to the factor that I talked about earlier, if there's a finding perhaps that a decision of a local agency is effectively prohibiting a wireless facility from going forward, that's one of the factors that would be taken into consideration.
I just want to, I wasn't really quite ready to push this as a motion. I just wanted to give you my sense that we should continue this. And we should provide, everybody should contribute to, if you agree with the continuance, I would, wanted to have everybody contribute to what you'd like to see when it returns.
I would like to see American Tower come through with their proposal after seven months to clean up that area.
I'm sorry, but that has nothing to do with AT&amp;T's application.
That's true.
That's totally separate.
You're absolutely correct, but it, it does have something to do with the neighborhood.
If, if we are going to continue, then I'd like to know the story on our access road. Because the health, the biggest health issue is people are accessing our paved road that is meant to go to the water, storage facility, and, you know, the old Verizon facility, and also the road going up to the microwave tower, which no longer exists. People are using that as access to the forest, you know, the Forester Ranch Trail, instead of going to the trailhead. So if we controlled access to the pavement, I think the health issue would disappear, because you'd have to enter on the trailhead.
So I can't respond-
I'm sorry.
I can't respond to that.
Or you access the paved area at your own risk, that you might have?
Yeah. So I did look up the track map and the easements. And this segment is referenced as a dual use. So there's several different easement notes, some that are utilities only, some that are pedestrian only. This one does reference utility and pedestrian access at this location. Secondarily, though, your note about signage is certainly something that could be under consideration by the Planning Commission.
At least we eliminate that.
Well, so maybe that's part of the criteria.
It would just be vision.
Maybe that's part of the criteria.
Let me just do a quick poll. Who, if I make a motion for continuance, are we comfortable? Are you comfortable with that?
I don't really like to do it. I think we need to kick this down the can. If they want to appeal, they can appeal to the city council, right?
So you're now on that? Okay. What about, you want to continue or keep going?
I think we need to continue for the reasons I stated.
Okay, Scott?
I'm willing to continue, but I disagree with some of your guys' logic, which I'm happy to-
Way in on?
Way in on.
Yeah, okay, great, fair enough. Karen?
Yes, but I want to go back to the American Tower.
Okay, so-
Wait, just let me explain.
Yeah.
It was stated here tonight by the applicant that having that tree in good condition does affect the cell tower itself, the mechanical. So that is my reasoning for that to be cleaned up and make sure that that is done first, before anything else gets put in that place. I also would like to see alternative areas that would be, that tower could be placed. Because again, I don't think that all of these, the alphabet soup here, I think we could go further down the alphabet and come up with something that is reasonable. I also don't like the fact that part of the FCC was included, but not all, as I read it, 108 pages here. It does not mention the length of time of exposure. It only mentions the actual PDF for the 50 times below. So I would like that to be expanded on for the RF report. So that's why I would like to continue it.
So let's have, I'd like to have a discussion, if we could, assuming we're going to continue this, what we'd like to see coming back. So Karen, what I'm hearing from you is an update on the Verizon facility? Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. And then what, can you just expand on the FCC regulation clarification you're looking for?
On the attachment, radio frequency, it's brief in the attachment, and it's from 1992, and I believe there might be an update, which was mentioned. So I'd like to see that. If there's no update, I would like it to be expanded for this area instead of this brief paragraph.
Commissioner, could I request what page you're looking at?
She's on 3A.
Actually, I'm on the attachments and on page four.
She's in the resolution.
Yeah, 3A, page four, 3A.
Okay.
So this, can I just, for clarification, for the resolution in point 3A, where it talks about the FCC, telecommunications facilities have to be consistent with the rules and regulations that do not cause public health hazards? What is it that specifically you're looking for?
It has a very brief paragraph of the explanation, but it doesn't include other paragraphs that might be germane to this.
Okay, so you'd like, in the staff report, a discussion about this 1992-
Yeah, the 34% versus the 50 times below.
Okay. So you'd like an expanded section of the staff report to speak to that?
Yes.
Got it. Okay. Let me just get that down.
And then the alternative locations, which was already mentioned.
Yeah.
Chair, if I can interrupt, if we're going into discussion, we should close the public hearing, although I realize if we're going to continue it, we're going to reopen it, so.
Yeah, okay. I was thinking, just leaving it open? Yes?
I guess it depends. If there's going to be a lengthy discussion, I would recommend closing it. But if, if we are going to have a motion soon, then I would be fine with leaving it open.
Okay, because I wanted to just call the applicant up while we're open with this respect to the community outreach. I just want to know if you are amenable to that, in good faith, to work with the community and really vet all options on the table, so that there's no doubt and there's no ambiguity with the residents, that they've all been thoroughly reviewed? And are you, are you amenable to doing that in good faith, sir? Okay. So he is on the record of to do that.
I can expand on mine.
Okay. Did, you want to go last, Scott, and just speak to any concerns you have on this?
Whatever, whenever, whenever, sure.
Okay. Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, just to expand on the request to look at some additional sites. You know, there was a lot of verbal tonight. Like, we were looking at an area with, with letters. But I think that you could expand on that in terms of giving us topo and sightline studies, so that we can document the fact that, you know, you do have these shadows, so that it's clear. And a way to do that is to, if you have topo, I know it takes time and effort to do that, but you can actually do a section through the site and show us visually why these particular locations won't work. And I think that might also help to reveal some other potential sites that might be less impactful to the neighborhood. And probably, if you're working with the neighbors, they have some ideas about some locations that might work. And you may just dismiss it and say, hey, this- And you may just dismiss it and say, hey, for this reason, if we go up there. But I think it needs to be more of a, you know, sort of a study, a more detailed study. Because we're not saying we don't trust what we hear, but it really helps everyone if we have documentation. And there's nothing like a good, you know, section through the site that shows all the topo, and we can look at that and really evaluate it. Is that, is that clear? Jonathan, in terms of criteria?
Yes, I understand what you're saying. Like, a couple of the sites, there was discussion about shadowing, and from the exhibits that we had here today, while, you know, staff was able to pan around, you know, Google Earth and look at the hills, and acknowledge locations where shadowing would be a real concern, that wasn't something that you were reviewing today. And so you'd like to see those exhibits and how that, the shadows would impact their coverage areas. So yes, I understand what you're looking for.
Okay, that's all you'd like to see, Gary. Is there anything you wanted to see if this comes, if we get a motion that passes to continue? What would you like to see brought back?
The easement and public access to our asphalt road.
Specifically, what are you looking for?
Well, that's not really the trailhead.
Right, but I think we heard that.
If we had signage or a gate that said, you know, this is not the trailhead to the Forester Ranch Ridgeline Trail, or if they get anywhere close to the, where they're concerned about RF, at least warn them. Say, use the, you know, using this entrance, well, it could expose you to, you know, EFM or electromagnetic EMR, EMF.
Kids don't like that stuff.
And then we put a gate there.
So we'll just, can I, Karen?
Put a gate there and a gate coming back, where the public has created their own little trail that goes.
Yeah, but he said it's dual use. It's defined as dual use.
We own the easement, so we can change it, just it's for vehicle access.
Did you say, Jonathan, it was for dual use?
The easement.
The paved road?
Yes, the current easement is for dual use.
We're the owners.
So you're saying change the?
Yeah.
All right, well, you could make that, I would do this. I would say to you, you can make that recommendation at that time, that you want to propose restrictions on the easement, but I think we've got the clarification that it is dual use now. So I don't, I don't know what else you're looking for.
I'll only vote for continuation as long as they expect that.
What about if part of the evaluation, it has to do with public access? If they can get it away from a trailhead, any kind of a trailhead, even if it's dual use? That could be part of the criteria.
They'd have to move the trail.
No, 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 put it at a different site.
Yeah.
Find a different site that doesn't, that isn't right next to the trail.
Right, it's a compatibility analysis.
I think part of the problem with that.
That's based on distrust of the.
I think we're going to have a hard time making a finding that that's not compatible when the Verizon Tower is right next to the trail. Like, why are we holding AT&amp;T to on standard that we didn't hold Verizon to? I think we're going to have a legal problem there.
We didn't, we weren't here when that was approved.
But just the logic of it.
And that's what CUPs are for. It's a conditional use. That's why they need a CUP.
But if they're concerned about health.
Let me just finish. We evaluate each of these independently. So that isn't necessarily a precedent that we need to take into consideration. We were looking at this particular site on its own, on its own merit, regardless of what else has been done out there.
No.
I don't agree with that.
Yeah, I disagree with you, but.
Okay.
I understand what you're saying, but.
No, no, we disagree.
Right.
Okay, is there anything else people want to see, and then I'll make a motion, and then we can discuss the motion, just to keep us focused? Is that fine?
Yeah, can I weigh in on some stuff?
Please, yeah.
I think that we're going to have a hard time saying that this guy can't be next to the trail when the Verizon Tower is. That's my opinion. I think maybe we should have a study session on the technicals of wireless standards, and get more up to speed on some of those things before any continued public hearing comes back to us. I agree that I think more sites could be investigated. It doesn't make any sense to me that, you know, they would look at sites that are down in a canyon or down at lower elevation, significantly lower elevations. I don't agree, I think, I think the primary drivers of that should be staff and the applicant, not the public, but I think the public can be invited and could weigh in. So maybe there could be a meeting at City Hall, planning run, and everyone on the mailing list and 500 feet invited, notified, and they could come and weigh in, but every neighbor doesn't get to call out every single potential site for evaluation. That doesn't make sense to me. But they should certainly weigh in, and staff could hear them and what they think, and as far as what could be evaluated. I agree, I think there probably is a better, more compatible site. I don't agree that, you know, we've got neighbors here that have said, well, my house is nearby, and I'm going to get hit, so we're not going to satisfy those people by rerouting the trail. I don't agree that someone made a comment about, oh, well, it's visually intrusive because you can see, you can see it. Like, you flashed up the proposed refresh of the Verizon, it looks like a tree, you know? Maybe not if you're standing right next to it, but from 50 feet away, 100 feet away, 200 feet away, it looks like one more tree that a seed blew in and grew up there. So I don't know why, I don't agree that that's a visual, a big visual negative impact. I agree that many cell towers do not look like trees, but the one that you showed, you know, does. Yeah, so those are my thoughts. Happy to continue it. Happy to support the other requests from the other commissioners.
Great. All right, I'm going to make a motion then to, do I, Jonathan, since we have an open public hearing, do we need to make it a date certain, or can I leave it open-ended so that you have time to work with the applicant, to do all these follow-up items that we're going to, that I'm going to rattle off? What do you suggest?
I would suggest, and I'm open to the city attorney commenting, but I'd suggest that we continue to, we only have one meeting in November, the next meeting in October is going to be too soon to accomplish that, but I would suggest that we consider the November 20th.
Are we under a shot clock for this?
Yes, that's something that we can address within a study session, so we'll look at some options to bring that back. In this case, the applicant has expressed a willingness to work through this process in good faith, so I think that.
That could hold us to that restriction.
That on-the-record element, you know, I think is helpful.
Okay.
But typically, yes, we do have to be expeditious about these reviews, and move it for ultimately.
So what would be that date then?
So November 20th is the available planning commission meeting.
Sir, is that amenable to you? Can you marshal resources, or do you want to push it to next year?
We'll have to push it out. Sightline studies, additional RF updates, community outreach, hosting, it'll take some time to coordinate and get that going. In regards to the shot clock, we're not, I should say, we are amenable. I could talk to my clients, it's their decision, but we could see if we could get a tolling agreement in place.
Thank you. Okay, that's, I want everybody to understand that is a big concession.
So we'll just not do a date certain?
Yeah.
We'll re-notice when this is.
Okay, okay.
The re-notice, that's fine.
Thank you for that concession.
Can I mention something?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what's your name, Mr. Applicant?
Will Kazimi.
Will, I appreciate your willingness to work with us and the neighbors to try and, I mean, really, honestly, the neighbors don't necessarily know, but I greatly appreciate your willingness to try and find a better solution. Thank you.
I wanted to weigh in as well. I think we have an upgrade, if I may say, from the last presentation, and I appreciate your personality in wanting to work with the neighbors. I am not against cell towers, but I see that there are some deficiencies here, and they need to be addressed. So I hope that you'll take all of this consideration and do your very best with all of the comments tonight, including the commission. Thank you.
Will do.
Yeah, really, thank you.
The tomatoes, just keep the tomatoes away for a bit.
So I'm going to move that we continue this item, and that the commission is requesting in the next staff report the following: an update on the Verizon facility, an expanded discussion in the staff report on FCC frequency report regulations, as well as the frequency report update, be updated to be current. The next would be additional alternative location analysis, and then a subpoint to that would be a city applicant-run meeting or workshop where the public is invited. And they may want to, you may want to run multiple versions of that. We'll leave that to you, but rather than, the point of that is, rather than just saying, go out to the neighborhood and do outreach, coordinate with the staff, let's do it with notice, let's do it with a process that we can document the meetings, and there's a formal way for people to actually submit their ideas, and they can see that they're submitted, and they can see that they're considered, and we do it that way then informally. So that's all that I'm trying to get to there. To Gary's point, let me, I'd like to have the, come back with any staff analysis that they want to provide on signage, ideas that they think would be appropriate, as well as I would like to see some analysis on how the maintenance will be handled going forward on both, not just this, not just the AT&amp;T application, but also the Verizon, because the city, if the city is the landlord, I think we need to hold them to account. I mean, we're essentially, we're members of the public, appointed, in an appointed role here, and part of that responsibility is to have oversight over the city. So I think what I'm suggesting is we do that, and we see in the staff report how the city will manage the maintenance and care and taking of the facilities, both of them. And then finally, as part of this motion, I would like to see, just so we have the option, a denial resolution, so we see what that would look like, which would include but not be limited to whatever the staff thinks would be appropriate, but I'm going to make some suggestions as part of this motion, the negative impact to the surrounding land use, and the inability of the city to actually maintain and manage and regulate the site. Because I don't, I don't see the city actually demonstrating that they can manage this. I think it's beyond their ability to do that myself, based on the evidence we've seen so far. Additional potentials would be a nuisance factor because of the unfettered access. It can be, we have taken public testimony about other telecommunications wireless facilities where people have graffiti, they've damaged, they've climbed on them, all of that. And I think we need to consider whether or not this site is appropriate and can be mitigated for all of those concerns. And if we can't mitigate those concerns, then it needs to be rejected. And that would be in that resolution for us to consider. And then that's just an option. If we get through that hearing and the alternative analysis is inadequate, that is in front of us. That would be my motion.
I think you have to add the fact that when, they're going to come back with a new site, is my guess.
I hope so.
That it needs to be presented in such a way.
Oh, your point, yes.
That we can visualize.
Okay, so, yeah, so I would add, as part of my motion, the things I want to see in the staff report would be a visualization of alternative sites, specifically the recommended site, but the top alternative sites and why they were rejected in a visual way. Does that get at your?
Yeah, I think the applicant understands.
Okay. Anything else that anyone wants to see in the report?
On the updated report, it should address cumulative, you know, including the Verizon.
Yes, that would be in the updated frequency report, that they would demonstrate that, yes.
Yeah.
And that's all wrapped in with Karen's FCC frequency regulations.
Can I chime in real quick? How do we measure the top three, I guess, in this case? Would this, could it come from the recommendation from the staff commissioners?
Yeah, I think really what we're looking for is a more clear visualization of why that's the better site, and it should take into consideration all of the comments that you've received, including, you know, things like access, you know, I mean, that should be part of it, but certainly the sightlines and the topo beyond just having aerial view of the site.
Are we talking about the access to the trail, or?
The access to your facility.
To the, to your facility.
Okay.
Yeah, so that it's not an attractive nuisance, because if we can't, if we had a negative, if we have a denial resolution, I would want that to be one of the points, is that it cannot be, the nuisance cannot be mitigated, and it would just, it would be a clear danger to the community, because it can't be mitigated. That's part of what a denial would include in that resolution.
Aren't you kind of doing the chicken before the egg? Because he's going to then have to have findings that say it's a public nuisance.
That's right, that would be.
But we're the ones that establish what's the public.
No.
And that means the fire department's going to go out there, and who else is going to go out there to see if it's a public nuisance?
However the staff wants to do it, I'm not prescribing how they do it, but we cannot go through this again without the option of, without knowing what our options are. And just so that everybody understands the inside baseball here, what the commission has been given by the staff is we would vote on a resolution, and that resolution is to approve it. That's what we have. We do not have a resolution to deny it. That's not in the packet. We can't make that.
I would agree, I would agree.
It is one of the options.
It's an option, but we don't have it in the packet.
You can deny it tonight, and he'll come back with a resolution.
We would not, no, you.
What he's saying is that one of our options, where it says alternatives on page four.
It's not included.
Needs to be our ability to deny.
Right, we do not have the ability to deny this tonight, because it is not an option. In order to do that, we need to make the findings, and we need to have it in a presentable resolution that is not in the packet. And that exercise of developing that denial resolution is the mechanism by which we would make our findings, and without that in the packet, we can't do it. Therefore, what I'm, all I'm trying to do, Jonathan, are you following what I'm saying? It's just an option. There'll be two resos, one approval, one denial. And if we get to a point in the next hearing where the site analysis is, we're Groundhog Day, and we want to consider denial, we can, we will have it in front of us, and the strengths will, the strengths will be in there, and we can say, yeah, we can make these findings or we can't. But without it, without the staff doing that work, we don't, we just, our hands are tied. And I feel like the exercise of doing that, and doing it where the, so the applicant will see that, is good motivation for everybody to be honest and do the very best they can to make this work, because both options are in front of us then, if we have it. Right now, it's not. So it's just a procedural thing, it's inside baseball, I'm trying to be transparent with the audience, that why that's important to have next time.
But I think you set up the public that it's going to be denied.
Nope, it's just an option, there'll be two.
Let me just argue one point.
Yeah.
If staff wanted to have the criteria to deny it, they would have presented it to us, if it was a public nuisance. It's not like they just fell off the avocado truck.
Yeah, we can still.
I'm just saying it's a waste of staff's time, bring us back a denial, unless you want to vote right now and deny it.
Let's, how about this? Let me get the motion out, let me get. Let me get the motion out, let me get it seconded, and then let's have that discussion, okay? So, is it clear what my motion is asking for?
It is. Can we, can we put in there to, what about, should a study session be in your motion?
No, we don't need that, that can just be directed. Karen, is it clear to everybody?
It's clear.
Okay, do we want, do we want to get a second and discuss it?
I'll second.
Okay. All right, so, I've made the motion, we've got Commissioner.
The reason I am seconding is because I think they're gonna come up with a good solution.
Yeah.
I don't think we're gonna have to deny this thing.
I would agree with that.
But we need to motivate them to come up with a better, and a better presented solution. So.
Well said. Okay, is there any other discussion on the motion?
I want to agree with that, because I feel like we haven't moved the ball down the field seven months ago.
We're right back where we were. Nothing's new.
So, I'd like to have some motivation.
This needs to be better next time. And I'm trying to put it together in an organized way, so that it's, the structure is set for success, so that it comes back better. Or if not, then we have another tool available, should we choose to use it, that's all. Jonathan, any questions about the motion before I ask for a vote?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay, is there any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, passes unanimous.
Not unanimous. I didn't vote.
Oh, so you heard what I'm saying?
Yeah.
All right, so it passes four to one abstention. Thank you. Thank you, sir, for your time tonight and your future efforts going forward, and we look forward to seeing you in the future. And again, thank you to the members of the public for your due diligence in bringing your concerns forward tonight. Made a big difference, so thank you. We are gonna proceed with the next agenda item. Is that okay, or do we need a break? We good? Do we keep going?
Yeah, yeah, I'm good.
Thanks. Here, can I give you, well, I'll just put these in my notebook. Okay, the next agenda item is Agenda Item 8C. It is also a public hearing, this is for Project 24-187, Sunset Shores remodel, and it's a request for an amendment to a development permit, and they are requesting a change to one of their conditions that requires a standard guardrail design. And I want to open the public hearing and quickly just do the round of disclosures. Are there any disclosures on this one? Mr. McCann?
I've been to the site, front and back.
Okay, so Commissioner McCann has conducted a site visit?
Same.
Same with Commissioner Prescott Loeffler? You feel, you guys feel like you're objective and all of that? Okay. With that, Zach, you've got this one?
I hope so.
Thank you, thank you for your staff report.
Good evening. This is Item 8C. As you referenced, it's a request for an amendment to a permit that was previously approved by the zoning administrator, PHP 24187. This is the site location that you may be familiar with, if you visited, and it's the same slide I used last time. It's 410 Corto Lane, but there's two access points, there's an access point on Arinoso Lane and on Corto Lane. And then there's been a lot of discussion about what staff is calling the rear of the building, but is visible from the public beach and the public pier. These renderings haven't changed since, I believe, March this year, and these renderings are showing the existing and the proposed facade improvements on Arinoso Lane and Corto Lane. And the intent here from the architect and the applicant, the HOA, is for more of a refresh and a Spanish colonial revival elements, but they're not reconstructing the whole building, they're adding facade improvements on the outside, they're improving the trash enclosure, the pavers on the driveway. And then they discussed with the Design Review Committee twice, some improvements to these tower elements and to the window treatments and some architectural embellishments fronting these two public cul-de-sacs. More recently, the discussions turned to the ocean side of the building. This is a photo that staff took from a public viewpoint that's on the northeast side of the building. And it's showing, you see those ducts there that have been a point of discussion related to the architectural towers that the applicant is proposing. These ducts would be covered by one of the towers or by a parapet wall, if that's the direction the applicant and the commission go. And then the other point of frequent discussion has been these guardrails, about half of which are glass. The original guardrails are those kind of deteriorating wrought iron that you see, especially on the top levels, and then you see a slightly different wrought iron on the bottom level. This is the result of the last Planning Commission hearing and a DRSC hearing and some feedback the architect got from staff and from members of the public. This is showing the oceanfront, basically a view you'd see from the public beach or the trail down below. You see three levels of the building, there's kind of four levels if you count the basement, but these are the three levels that are visible. You see the existing view that's got a mishmash of glass and of wrought iron guardrails, and then you see sort of the seventies style, actually, late sixties style of the building. And the refresh below has some stucco elements, it has entirely glass guardrails, and then it has some pergola elements on the roof, as well as some other wood finishes, and some corbels on the top floor, not the roof, but the floor right below the roof. I'll see if I have a more zoomed-in facade that was presented at DRSC. Let's hear, I was hoping it would zoom in more and we can try if there becomes commission discussion. But these are some of the elements that were discussed at DRSC and that the applicant has proposed for architectural embellishments. Staff had some comments on these, and then the three DRSC committee members had other comments, but this is the latest iteration that was provided by the applicant, actually on Thursday, so this didn't make it into the staff report packet. I have the staff report packet slides a little later. Elements that were discussed are these corbels on the second to top floor, which staff felt were more embellishment than was needed. Staff and the DRSC members all supported the upper level pergola gazebo-style wood elements. And then likewise, for where the pink circles are, staff originally wasn't supportive of these wood understory elements that are sort of cladded on the understory of some of the balcony openings. We like the ones on the top. And then finally, there was discussion about the two stucco colors, there's sort of a darker stucco and a lighter stucco. And I want to thank the architect, Tony, for providing a bunch of different renderings and different color options. This is like the sixth iteration of the design. This one was mostly supported by the DRSC that has the traditional Spanish-style white stucco on most of the building, but there was a lot of discussion about how it would be nice to have an offset with a second stucco color. Staff's comment is that hasn't been a traditional recommendation, that wouldn't really be consistent with our interpretation of Henry Lenny style or traditional Spanish colonial revival style. There's been some commission discussion about how we're not going for a pure Spanish colonial revival-style building here, and that, you know, any kind of architectural embellishment is encouraged, and a different color embellishment is, could be appropriate in this instance. And I think that was three out of the four. The other thing that's been discussed extensively is what the glass will look like in this context. In this photo, there's one unified glass design. The applicant initially had proposed and staff had recommended that the individual balconies, which are owned by individual unit owners, be allowed to be replaced one at a time, as those individual owners deem their old balcony facades obsolete. The staff recommendation with prompting from DRSC in this case is that within three years of issuance by the city of building permits, that the HOA be responsible for encouraging or implementing an incentive program for the individual owners to replace all of the balconies with a unified design. That design would be submitted to the city planner and would be pre-approved by the HOA, essentially the design that they're proposing on this image with replacement of most of the glass guardrails, that that would be implemented throughout the building within three years of issuance of the building permit. So, that's how staff has modified the condition that was originally imposed by the zoning administrator. The ZA would have allowed them to be replaced over a longer time period than three years, but what was objectionable to the applicant was the ZA requirement that they be a more traditional Spanish colonial revival style of not glass elements. So, if the Planning Commission were inclined to approve these glass elements, the compromise that we believe was reached during DRSC hearing was that we go with the glass, but it all happens in a uniform design within three years. This is the material board that was presented for, again, most of the exterior facade improvements. It doesn't cover the balcony, but it covers the quality tile materials and the stucco. I would point out again that it just shows one stucco color, not two stucco colors. The last slide is showing different stucco colors, so that's something you could deliberate or you could ask the applicant about. And then just harping on that point a bit more, you know, the design guidelines do allow for different color treatments and different embellishments, but usually there's one color of, you know, unified facades, and then the embellishments might be around different smaller building elements, rather than the facade itself having two colors. I don't think we need to read through this slide, this is in the staff report, this is how staff would recommend, you modify the zoning administrator's condition of approval 4.3, and this would say that within three years, there's to be that unified glass design. And then the additional special condition that staff would recommend is that after reviewing these slides, or I can show a few more slides that were discussed in DRSC or the previous iteration of the project, once there is agreement from the Planning Commission, you provide that direction verbally, and staff will incorporate that into condition 5.3, just to make sure that the final agreed-upon design elements on the oceanfront side are called out, since those aren't all directly in the staff report, or if there's any kind of change from what's proposed by the applicant, we get that clear in this condition, since the previous staff report and the zoning administrator approval were more focused on the other two facades. And I think these are all just extra slides that we can run through, these are plans that would mostly implement the rendering I just showed. There is an option A and an option B here. Option B has a, more of a parapet wall, whereas option A has a small tower. That was discussed at the Design Review Meeting, and it was generally resolved that the applicant should propose something, and DRSC didn't feel the tower needed to be larger, there was concern about neighboring view impacts. So, option A would keep the tower that was presented at DRSC, option B would have a less visually noticeable parapet that's slightly larger than the two other parapets, I think, because there's more ducts on the left side of the building here. It's my understanding the applicant is now proposing option B, which should be a smaller tower than the one that was previously proposed, and a much smaller tower than the towers that were discussed by the zoning administrator six months ago. So, I think I'll leave it at that slide, I have a few more slides that show all the iterations of this project, if you have questions about the history or how we got here. We can also zoom in again and you can ask the architect, how the architect settled on this design.
Zach, do you want to just leave it maybe on the rendering, on the one that Tony's recommending?
Yeah. Let me see if there's a bigger version.
Because that looks like A, and if he's recommending B, if you could just leave it on B, that would be great. Yeah, thanks. Okay.
Thank you.
Any question?
Thank you.
Thank you, Zach, great, great, well done, well done. Any questions for staff on this? Okay, Tony, you're up. You've been through the drill before. Ten minutes on the clock.
Yeah. You need my name, or you know me?
For the record, though, why don't you go ahead and do that?
Yeah, I'm Anthony Masaro, I'm the architect, and I'm representing the HOA. And so, a couple of things, so, just going back, remembering, yeah, the initial, the building was approved, the issue with the HOA was on the guardrail in the back, so kind of the compromise from our last meeting was, I initially said, "Hey, we're not doing anything in the back, it's just square, we can't really do much, we're just gonna freshen up with stucco, but we'd like to do the glass guards." And so, in return, the committee was like, "Hey, then if, we'll go with the glass guards, we understand the cost and the view, et cetera, but hey, can you step it up and really try to make the rear of the building look better?" So, as I started working, I felt like, and I'm the one that requested, "Hey, can we do DRC again, just for the purpose of like, well, we wanna, if you guys want to make this a good effort, we want to make a good effort." So, that's why I called, so we could talk. And so, the tension was, well, how do we take this really symmetrical box building, that's a grid, and create the asymmetry of the Spanish colonial that we're all looking for? So, that's really, when you see the treatments of the color and the corbels, et cetera, that was kind of how I was trying to mix and match things. And actually, we feel, I do feel, and the HOA feels pretty good about it, so, as far as, and there's various opinions where DRC felt like, "No, we like the corbels in some areas," and staff was like, "Well, you know, we're not so sure about the color." So, I felt by the time we were all, everyone sort of has a design opinion, if, you know, at some point, if there wasn't one unanimous, like, "Hey, we should all do this," then I felt like, "Okay, then I've heard everybody's opinion and we're gonna go with what we think is best." So, that's why I landed with that. Then secondarily was, the neighbors were there, and we spoke to them, and I mentioned in the meeting, it's like, "Hey, I'm not trying to make an architectural statement, I'm not hanging my hat on putting a tower over on the left side." It was really more of an effort to enhance the asymmetry. So, the compromise that, or the look that I said was, I still really like the idea of the base going, at the base's color and then it comes up vertical, so that's why I kept that portion on the left, rather than doing kind of the octagonal parapet, I kept it square, because it really looks like that mass just rolls straight through the roof. So, that's all I was trying to do, is visually create the sense of a mass, but it was important to us, I mean, like I said, I wasn't dying to put a tower, it's important to the neighbors to lower that thing back to the two-foot that it was originally approved, so we're happy to do that. And so, that's kind of where we landed, so those are my comments on the building, so architecturally. So, Scott from the HOA is gonna come up as far as to discuss the position on the rails, but do know the request was, "Hey, have these rails been permitted?" So, there were, there's eighteen units, nine of them have a brand-new, consistent glass rail, we provided the permits, we provided the detail that was used, and the HOA is like, "This is the one that the HOA has put in the place, and we'd like to have that consistently." So, what, the feeling is, well, we're already halfway there, it's nine out of eighteen, and so, the thought was like, "Well, could we put a time limit, or what's a pushback?" And so, I felt, that's when I stressed to the HOA, it's like, "Come and explain your vision and how you feel the guardrail." So, that's where pretty much my presentation ends, and I'd like to, Scott, to pick up, unless there's questions on the building. But, and my, the HOA is specifically going to discuss their feelings about the time limit and.
Let's have him come and we'll bring you back up for questions.
Okay.
Thanks, Tony.
Hello, everyone. Nice to see you. My name is Scott Delahook, I'm on the Board of Directors at Sunset Shores, I have been for many years, bought our unit in the complex in 2008. At the depth of the market, it was quite an interesting time to buy a condo unit. About ten years ago, I was on the Architectural Committee, and we wanted to start creating standards, looking long-range to do some kind of facade improvement. So, we came up with a uniform rail, deck rail, and over the last ten years, as Tony just mentioned, nine of the eighteen units have followed that uniform standard that we have created. That leaves nine units that have not. Six of the nine have glass rails, and I strongly feel that if you were standing on the pier or on the beach and you looked up, it would be really difficult to tell the difference between the nine newest and the six glass rails that are there, but not with that standard that we created ten years ago. Three of the units have that original metal slat, and it's, doesn't look great, and it is what it is. We have some challenges with the CCNRs, because the HOA controls the decks and the railings. Now, the way we have worked with property owners that do renovations is when they come in and they submit an application to renovate their unit, we ask them to pay the cost of the deck rails. So, all the glass rails have been installed at the owner's cost when they do the renovation. The three that are the original obviously have not done renovations, have not replaced their rails. So, there is a challenge when, if you want the nine that have not done the upgraded or the standardized glass rail, you're asking the HOA to pay for those nine to be replaced. And six of those nine, those people have already spent money to put glass rail in, the three that haven't chose not to, but to put that burden, it's gonna be about a quarter million bucks to take, to replace those nine rails that are not the uniform standard that we set up ten years ago. And I can tell you, this has been a ten-year process to get here, that if you put a quarter million dollars to just. million dollars to just replace the non-conforming glass railing, this, we're dead. There's no way that that added cost is something that the owners is going to, they're going to be comfortable taking on. So we'll continue to work with anyone that does renovation to replace the railings in the future, but to have a time limit, which will force us, when we go to the members, and say, you know, we have to do it in three years, so we've got to incorporate it into the capital campaign, to me is just incredibly onerous, and I, in all honesty, is just not going to fly. So we're going to wind up not being able to go forward. That's just my honest reflection. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Tony, you're all done? We're in question mode with you guys?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, so let's go questions. So Steve, you'll open up your mic, so go ahead first.
Yeah, first question is for Mr. Delahook. So if it's just the three, then that wouldn't be too onerous. That's something that you could probably agree to, but you're saying if it's all nine, it's going to be a deal killer?
It'll be a deal killer. With all the engineering and the installation, the most recent unit was Unit O, I believe, and it cost them about six or seven years ago.
Yeah, I'm not debating the cost. Everything's ridiculous.
So here's the challenge, though. The three that have not changed out their rails by choice, you're then asking the HOA to step in and to spend the money. It's not them spending the money for their three rails, because they haven't done it so far. It's the entire HOA's, it's going to add, you know, 75,000 bucks to the overall construction.
That's what I'm trying to clarify.
Yeah.
You're saying that if there's a time limit on any of those, it's going to be a deal killer?
Because we've got to fold in that cost.
There are three or nine?
Correct. Yeah.
Well, that's a--
We're working, we're working in the, as best we can, and we've had half of the owners change over, and frankly, we only have three that really look out of place. It's those original three. The other six, you know--
Yeah, no, I get it. And you're saying that those glass, the ones that are already glass, you know, you're not going to be able to tell the difference. But, you know, the ZA insisted on the wrought iron, right? So that's a deal killer.
That's, yeah, I mean, we won't--
That's the reason you're here.
Yeah, exactly.
But you don't see any way to be able to work with us to get those other three somehow included. I mean, that's a lot of expense in this project. And I understand the history and the fact that, you know, these three particular owners have held out or whatever, and that there's going to be some extra benefit to them, but that's not, that's not unheard of. I mean, that's, you're telling us here that that's absolutely a deal killer, or that, you know, that's, it may be workable if we just agree to the three, because you're basically telling us, hey, you know, you're not going to accept a time limit on this thing.
So we have no mechanism to force them to do it? If we mandate that it be done, the HOA pays for it, and that's 75,000 bucks.
Which people could agree to.
I can tell you that if we are able to go forward with the renovation, and the, you know, the members approve it, and they'll fund it, we will certainly work with those three owners and say, you know, maybe even financially try and incentivize them to meet us halfway. We'll work in that capacity, but I think to forcibly say it's got to be done in three years or even five years, I think it's a tough, it's a tough sell, just being honest.
Okay.
Everything in this, in this journey's been a tough sell.
Can I, can I jump in on your line? One of the things that the city does, which annoys people, but they do it, because we have public benefits that we can't fund either, like sidewalks. And what we do is we lay in wait, and someone wants to do a capital improvement to their project, and we go, we'll approve it if you do a sidewalk. So that's another, that's another option to use as leverage, is if you want to make any, if you want to make any changes, you've got to include this. Are you amenable to doing something like that as part of your approach?
Well, I think that's how we've gotten the nine conforming railings in the last 10 years.
Yep.
Is that we've said, okay, it's got to be to this standard. We're creating a uniform standard, so we're halfway there. The minute any of those three that haven't done anything come to us--
They're going to, that's going to trigger.
It's going to trigger. Those three are going to be done.
Okay.
But I think he's saying that they're not going to--
Put a timeline on it.
They need to put a timeline on it.
Yeah, I hear that. That's what I hear. Okay. Other questions for either Scott or Tony?
Yeah, I have a question for Tony.
Tony, come on up, please.
So, you know, we talked about this thing last time at DRSC, and what you're proposing is just the parapet, not the tower--
Correct.
--on the left.
Correct.
And is that just a straight parapet?
Yeah.
It just comes straight up?
But I've kept it the width. You can see I've used the edge of the sliders to kind of visually, to feel like it's a mess that's going up. Yeah, rather than just repeating the three.
And there's three little, what, recesses?
Right. Just, I thought I would do like some kind of a punch, just to give a little bit of dimension.
Okay. And so this one that we're looking at here on the bottom, just so we understand, the color, it runs from the right module, if you want to call it that, down vertically, and then all the way across the, is it the first two levels? Because you don't really--
Correct. You know, actually, if you pull up the 2D that had the option A and option B, I just threw the hatch on there, just for the very purpose of showing that. Was that the one? It's just the black and white version, but it, you could see I put a colored, yeah, there you go. If you zoom out, that was the indication. Again, we can mix and match the color if you want, but that's kind of, that was the intent of it.
Okay. Yeah, no, I just wanted to get that clarified.
Correct.
And the, that tower, well, it used to be a tower, the thing on the left, that's the same height as the other two.
Correct. It's two foot, which is code minimum to cover the pipes.
Okay. That's all we got.
Anybody else have a question for the architect?
Okay, so Tony, so your proposal is now option B, which still has the two-tone stucco. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And what about the wood cladding on the underside? I don't remember, I love it, by the way. I don't remember, Zach's presentation said something about, I don't know if you guys are recommending, or you said, thought there was agreement to remove it from the lower floors. I don't remember that. If we can go back to the picture, where you had--
Yeah, and I remember actually from, the DRSC members were pushing back, like, no, we like that, the color change. I just think it mixes it up. It adds some dark brown and--
I think it gives dimension and depth to it. I think it makes it look upgraded. So you're proposing the undercladding on the two center cores?
Correct. That's, visually, that's low-hanging fruit. There's no, whether I stucco it or clad it, it's the same cost in its color. That's why they're going to get so much bang for the buck. But yes, I would prefer the darker color.
Okay.
Let me, can I just jump in?
Please do.
So this image we're looking at here with all the circles and ellipses and everything, those are recommendations by staff? Those are not your design?
Correct.
Okay. There you go.
So staff is recommending match the other parapet.
Which we don't have to go along with.
Right. Remove some of the cladding, remove the corbels, and do one stucco color. That's staff's recommendation.
And match the parapet design across the board.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, 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 okay. Okay, I have no other questions.
I have one.
All right.
Are you really, you know, stuck or married to the two-tone color? Or could you go with one or the other?
Oh, we could live with the white. I think the two-tone gives it more of the asymmetry, but no, I mean, we originally, the original design that was approved, however many months ago, was just going to be all white. So I, so this is kind of where I feel stuck in the middle, in the sense, like, we, there's architects, oh, you guys are designers, have good eyes, and then staff has an opinion, and I have an opinion, and HOA. So it's like, yeah, I'm confident, our key was lowering that parapet for the neighbors, because it wasn't important enough to do the tower.
I see.
So the next key is freshening it up, and if you said, hey, keep the whole thing white, and just, but keep, I would probably push harder to keep the brown underside in those center units, and could live with the all-white. But, you know, if one of the architects came up and said, we like the two-tone color from the DRSC, it really is a wash. There's no huge push for me either, in either direction.
So you like the lighter rather than the darker?
Oh, well, if I was going to do monotone, I'd make it all white.
Right.
Yeah.
I would agree with you.
Okay.
And that vision. Okay, thank you.
Gary, did you have any question? Okay. Tony, the staff recommend, this is a great slide to have up, the staff recommendation to match the parapet design across all three. What's your read on that?
The original one, they were all the same. It just, it flies against the, make this thing asymmetrical. So if you were going to do that, then sure, then at that point, it's, losing the color and losing that element on the left, that's the only real asymmetry tricks I have, because it's just a grid. And if the, if the DRSC says, hey, just, that's okay, we agree it's a grid, and clean it up, and just make a couple of details, yeah, we could live with that.
Okay. You can live with that. All right. Yeah, because it is a grid, and, you know.
Yeah.
It is what it, we, yeah. To me, there's, yeah, okay. All right, there's no more questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
What's that?
Public speakers.
We do have one comment card. Sam Saul, are you here? Are you, Sam?
I am Sam.
Well, welcome, sir.
Sam.
Thanks for staying late, so, and waiting, being patient for your item to come up.
I got about 30 seconds. It's similar to what I talked to a few of you a few weeks ago at the design review thing. I'm Sam. My wife, Robyn, is here with me. We own a condominium at Reef Gate West. That's the 72-unit condominium complex to the right on that picture. Three different buildings. We face Sunset Shores to the northwest, out our windows. I just want to say that we hope the city, you folks, Zach, the principal planner, we hope Sunset Shores and Reef Gate West, that's us, continue to work together for a win-win-win solution. It's been tremendous working with these guys, their flexibility. Tony has been great for us. The HOA management has been great for us. In fact, we feel the most recent designs, you guys upgraded a little bit tonight, and staff's most recent recommendations is a win-win-win for the city, Sunset Shores, and Reef Gate West. Thank you.
So you're in support?
I'm in total support with what we're showing today.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Is there anyone else that wants to speak to this item? All right. Do we have any other lingering questions for staff, or can I close the, or I'll close the public hearing discussion? What do we want to do?
Can I lead off?
Yes. Scott McCann would like to lead off, please.
I cannot rush fast enough to vote yes for this project.
Okay.
I'm serious. I love it, love it, love it, love it. Mr. HOA guy, you absolutely hired the perfect architect for this. And I've never met or worked with Tony before. But, I mean, what he's done, or proposing with this building, is transformational. So, with that being said, let me mention a few specifics. I'm fine with the lower parapet. I love keeping the wood cladding understory on all three levels. The corbels, I don't care, yes or no, whatever anybody else wants. I like the one stucco white, one color stucco white, and I am completely supportive of not requiring or forcing the railing upgrades. I believe they'll get turned over over time, and that'll just be fine. This is such a massive improvement to what's there, and this is a big dollar for these 18 owners to take on. They're writing a big check.
Yeah.
And so to try and force more dollars on them, I don't, I don't see it, but that's how I feel.
Okay, so you're neutral on the corbels, and why don't we just go through this? I think the staff recommendation. So let me start with the, eliminate the wood clad understory recommendation, that's the purple reference there. Just give me, I'm not, just give me, I just want to do an informal poll.
Thumbs up or thumbs down?
Can I just suggest--
Yeah.
A different approach?
Yeah, great.
You know, I think that we suffer from piecemealing architecture, right? Let's put the trellis in. Let's change the color. Let's do this, you know, let's look at it as a total composition, okay? You know, Tony has been, and the homeowners have been, I think, very patient, because they came back. I mean, when was the first time we looked at this? In March, I think it was? And we're totally for this improvement. But it's a relentless, you know, the problem is, you're looking at this building by itself. You know, we look at the, you know, the bluff top in San Clemente, and we see the potential of it being like, like the Riviera. I mean, it's, we have the topo, we have the landscape. Over time, I mean, obviously, there's a lot of bad buildings, and there's some good ones, right? So I think if we look at this, if we kind of step back and we look at this as a composition, and you're, yeah, it's a kit of parts, right? There's things that we're looking at specifically in terms of detail. But really, I think we have to look at the whole composition of this building and see that it's not just this flat, horizontal grid. Doesn't have to be that, right? And so I could certainly get outvoted tonight. I have a feeling I probably will. But I think that the suggestions that we made in terms of trying to create a composition that looks at the entire bluff top by adding the two tones, which, there's a lot of precedent, there's actually a lot of precedent for that, in the Spanish colonial revival. I understand this is not strictly Spanish colonial revival, but I did bring a couple of images tonight that I can pass back and forth, if you guys want to take a look at them. A building up in Santa Barbara, it's Santa Barbara Courthouse, the county courthouse, which does utilize not only two tones, and there's subtle changes, which I think relates not just to the building and space, but to the color of the soil, the landscape. I mean, there's a lot of things that are there that allow us to do a little bit more here than just come up with a simple kit of parts that adds a little bit more detail. And so I'm, I'm totally in favor of the two-tone. I think if we look at it in context, it makes a lot more sense. I actually think that everything that's on here, I prefer the Gable Tower, because I think, again, it strengthened the idea of creating some visual interest and removing some of that relentless symmetry that we see on this building. And so for me, that's, the overall composition is really what we need to consider. And then looking at these particular items, I mean, that's what people tend to do. They focus on color, you know, certain features, certain details, which are not necessarily the way to look at a project like this. So, yeah, I could teach a class on this, probably, but I'm going to stop there and just say, give that some consideration.
Okay. But what's the approach that you're suggesting, then?
Is, well, is, instead of voting on each--
Element?
Element or detail.
Okay.
Let's at least think about the overall composition, because I felt like that your approach was going to be kind of like, you know, what I'm talking about.
So, how do we get to--
I think what I'm doing is I'm defending my position, which is that we leave this the way it is. Get rid of all the ellipses and circles.
Oh, as proposed, right here.
As proposed.
That's the part I was missing.
Well, that's what I was getting to.
Okay, okay.
But I want to make, I want to give some rationale for why I'm saying--
I just have a question. If the HOA or the homeowners decide that they would prefer one color over the other, it doesn't require any other permit, does it? If you go with the two-tone, do they have to, staff versus staff?
Yeah, I can respond to that. So this is in our architectural overlay area now, and so, and it's also within a certain distance of, as a multi-family building of Casa Romantica. So there's a couple of triggers for exterior, any exterior changes getting a review, but it would be an administrative development permit. However, we can forego that if the commission wants to, within their motion, indicate an allowance for a couple types of coloring options.
Yeah, I'm suggesting that we stick to it. I mean, we, we can dictate the colors. And again, you guys may not agree with me, but I wanted to make a case for why I think this is a better.
I don't necessarily disagree with you.
Solution.
Yeah, can I jump in on?
Yeah.
This is a little response. One, I preferred the tower element, by the way, I did. But I'm fine with this. And the Reef Gate guys, you know, want it lower.
Yeah.
I'm fine. And I certainly defer architectural judgment to you. So if you feel strongly about the two-tone color scheme, that certainly makes me, you know, reconsider. If you feel really strongly about it, I could, I could go for it.
I'm not artistic, so I'll have to defer.
Well, I like the way this is going.
Normally, he gets a little bit more pushback from the DRSC from, I don't know.
They live there. It's neat and clean, and it's their homeowners association, and they're, they're trying their best to upgrade, so.
Okay. So Steve, your, your, your pitch is the, as it appears right here. That's your pitch?
Yes.
Don't ignore the staff recommendations to eliminate the corbels, the underclad, and the two-tone, and also having the parapits match. Don't, yeah. The only thing is, I, you know, what is your take on the parapits? Because to me, I, it doesn't feel like the building's complete. It just feels odd that there's two, one, and then another one over there. What's your feeling about that? Because it is a grid, and I understand if you're looking at a Spanish Colonial Revival, the, having the symmetry off is part of the design, but this isn't that. So we're, we're kind of, it feels odd.
Well, again, I think we can only do so much here, right? And I think that there's enough, that we're doing enough, that to me, it doesn't feel odd. I think it feels like a composition now.
Okay.
And I prefer the Gable Tower, but I understand the neighbors would prefer to have that reduced, and I think it's still fine. I think it's.
I want to support the neighbors on that one, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a strong enough element. The fact that it's, it's not the octagon shape. That it does pull us away from that relentless symmetry. And that's why I brought those, just a couple of images.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
To show that that's sort of grounded. I like the fact that it does reach up at, you know, a couple of locations, but it's basically a plinth.
Yeah.
Across the base, which I think is a strong feature.
You put some thought into this.
Well, welcome to what it's like to be on the design review subcommittee. This is what we do. We'll take an hour on a project and run around on it. Okay. So Steve, do you want to make a motion?
Sure.
Okay.
What, what about the railing and the timeframe and?
That's all, let's, I think, you said it, you said it well, Scott. I'm in, I'm in agreement.
Force upgrade.
Yeah, we want this project to go ahead.
So let's hear the motion, and then we can pick it apart if we need to.
Okay. So I make a motion that, do we have, this is not a sequa.
Yes. Go to page six to, there you go, right here. Do these guys right here, do that, and this, and this.
All right. So I move that we approve this project and that it is, the amendment request requires a finding of this project. Okay, I move that we find it's categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, Guideline Section 15301, blah, blah, blah. And that we, that we, do we have to, we have to find, that we find, that we, that we agree with the required findings, and that we leave the option B as is. And that's my.
Okay.
Motion.
Second.
Except you wanted no force upgrade. Is that included?
Oh, yeah.
Let's, staff, what's in recommend, Zach, what's in the, the resolution with respect to the upgrades on the railing? Does it require it within the five year, or three years?
Yes.
Strike it?
I'm flashing the slide now. This is the original reason for this hearing was the applicant requested condition 4.3 be modified. The applicant's request, it would just be that you modify it to allow glass in addition to the Spanish.
I see it right there. It's right in the middle of the screen, and at all guardrails which exist on the west oceanfront facade within three years of issuance. So what we want to do essentially is strike that from your motion.
Right.
And then you'd want to strike the last clause as well that says they have to submit an application to replace all of them within three years.
Is your, can you want to amend your motion to strike those two clauses?
Yes.
Second, is the statute okay with the second?
Yeah, but can we just add that the HOA has to, when they are doing internal architectural approvals, that they require.
Require it.
Compliant, which they're going to do anyway, but.
With the glass.
I, I got the feeling that that's in place now.
It is, Scott.
We do not need to stipulate that.
Okay, that's fine.
That was in the zoning administrator's condition, and we were actually recommending it be struck out. So if you want to leave the zoning administrator condition in there, that just said they have to provide, the HOA does, a uniformed design that is HOA-approved and city planner-approved, that now could show glass, but that they have to give us a design that they're going to incorporate in future improvements as they come, not within three years, just piecemeal it as they come.
Restore those.
So that's the top line.
I would just say, when we're issuing the permit, they have to give us basically the design they like, and that they'll incorporate that over time.
Okay, but it has to be consistent.
So what?
Their design standard, yeah.
Yeah, what I would see here is the second part that struck out that says, it's like the fourth line down, all guardrails which may be replaced in future improvements to the structure, and any guardrails which have been previously replaced without the benefit of the permits. So that, Zach, would be restored?
That would be restored, and it would, it would, if you read the first part, it says including glass, metal, and/or wood, whereas previously it said just SCR, but now it would allow glass, metal, and/or wood.
Yeah.
And it would have to meet building calks and structural and height dimensions, but it would be a design that would allow all of those elements.
Okay. So we would restore that part, strike the part underneath of it. What about the standard design may be similar to the design identified in sheet A 4.2? What, does that stay struck, or does that get restored?
That design was more of a wrought iron design.
All right, so we'll leave that, we'll leave that out. Guardrail plans associated with future improvement, unpermitted improvements to the city planner and the building department, private construction. Does that stay struck, or does that?
The intent there was for the HOA to come up with a design in the next couple of months and provide that to the city planner and have that be the design going forward.
Okay. We, we want that back, I think, right?
Yeah, because the detail has to match.
Yeah. An application to replace all non-conforming, within three, so we'll strike that. So the bold, we're going to, the bold part, we're going to, we're going to strike, and then we're going to, and then we're going to restore all the areas that have been striked except for consistent with the Spanish Colonial Revival architecture and spacing, and the design identified on the sheets.
Yeah.
That, that'll remain struck out. Does that, is everyone following?
Yep.
Yeah.
And this, is the motion therefore going to incorporate that?
Yeah.
Okay? And the second?
Yes, I agree.
All right.
And then we would just modify this staff recommended condition. This is a new condition, saying you support option B. You want to see all the treatments in option B?
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
Bring on the two-tone color.
Yes? Scott?
Agree.
Okay, all right. Any further discussion on the motion to?
I guess I do have a question.
Yes.
Is the color specified already, or is it architectural choice, architect's choice?
I don't think we need to review that. I think the staff can work with the applicant. I think it's, it's a, you know, color found in nature. It's a sort of a, it's a light dirt color.
I, I don't feel we need to.
No, I'm not saying that we need to, but I'm saying, do, do we need to specify that they have to get approved by staff or anything like that?
No, he said no.
Okay, great.
Any other discussion before we vote? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass is unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. You have your permit and the way you want it.
We're looking forward to seeing those.
And thank you for investing in San Clemente and making your complex beautiful. It's a major upgrade.
Yes.
And we are thankful that you guys are going to make that investment.
We'll invite you over for some water when it's done.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Sam.
Okay, this is our last. Okay. Why don't we pause?
Scott just took a little break. We need, we need, we need him here, right? Just, we don't want to skip off the next item without, without him, right?
So Steve, that color is light dirt.
That's your discretion.
Light dirt. Light dirt color.
It is 9:35.
Oh, we have to finish this tonight.
Yeah.
It's a ring, isn't it?
Yeah.
So let's just go ahead and vote.
I just stall in a little bit to give Scott a few more minutes, but why don't I go ahead and open up, introduce this? This is our final public hearing of the evening. Yay, number four. Let me thank the audience for your patience as we, you know, someone had to be last. I know, I know, I'm so sorry. Welcome to our life, though. Welcome to the planning commission. This, I.
Fine, you enjoyed all that.
You learned something, hopefully. This is item 8D. It is the Housing Element Action Plan and Objective Design Standards. It's a public hearing for the planning commission to provide recommendations to the city council on zoning amendment ZA 24193 to adopt objective design standards, selection of sites previously identified in the housing element to be added to the housing overlay, and zoning table amendments to authorize additional residential uses within residential, commercial, and mixed-use zoning districts. Let me just put this into context very quickly. Our housing element was approved by the city council over two years ago, and then almost to the day, two years ago, our housing element was certified by the state. We included in that submission that was certified by the state, a follow-up item to craft a housing action plan. That is what's before us tonight, the action plan. Okay? So with that, I want to just, I don't know that there's any, is there anything to disclose on this? I don't think so, right?
No, not on this one.
Okay. With that, I'm going to go ahead and, this, as a public hearing, hearing, open the public hearing and turn this over to our professional staff, Zach Ream, who is a principal planner, who's been working on this in a very dedicated way for his report. Zach?
Thank you. So I have a few slides that say basically what you just said, that this is a continuation of the city's housing element. The council initially considered it in 2021, but it was, the state required some changes, and the council approved those in October 2022, two years ago. So the housing element provides policies and programs to maintain and improve housing needs in San Clemente for different types of housing options. And in bold is the housing action plan, which includes several components. Even under the housing element, there's the housing action plan, then there's an implementation program. And within the implementation program, there's goals, strategies, programs, and objectives. So what we're trying to do tonight is accomplish four of the goals that are part of the housing action plan, that's part of the housing element, that the city council and the state already agreed upon two years ago. So goal 5.1 says adequate opportunities for new housing for all economic levels and those with special needs shall be provided. This package would implement that through program one, which provides adequate sites for new housing to be developed, and then monitoring to make sure we don't have a net loss of housing, or if those sites are redeveloped, that we then designate more sites where housing can be proposed. This would also accomplish part of program two A, which requires that we comply with other state laws that allow for by right, nondiscretionary approval of projects that provide 20% or more affordable units, which the state categorizes as low or very low income. Program two B says that we comply with SB 35 with respect to any project that includes that 20% affordable, or there's actually some other thresholds if you have different levels of very low, extremely low, and then you can provide more units if you have moderate income housing. And then SB 35 further requires objective design standards, which is what we've been calling this packet mostly for the last year or so. And those are design standards that get implemented by professional planning staff and by the architect through a more streamlined review process rather than discretionary review. And then program five is to expand what's currently our affordable housing overlay into a housing overlay. It'll cover the same strip along El Camino Real that we have designated now as an affordable housing overlay, and then it will add six sites to our housing overlay that we committed to as part of program one, to add more sites where affordable housing or mixed-income housing can be developed. This slide's hard to explain in a, in a quick way, but you've probably all heard of RENA before. RENA is the state's calculation that then goes through the regional government SCAG that then gets dropped down on the city, and it's how many units of housing we have to provide at various income levels. And by implementing these four programs, and then some more programs that we've agreed to work on over the eight years of the housing element, this is the state's projection of how many units could feasibly be developed in San Clemente. The city doesn't have to develop them ourselves. We can identify a range of methods in which we can support lower-income housing as well as moderate income, as well as market rate housing. But this is a table that shows that the various sites and the various candidate rezoning sites or housing overlay sites where that may happen over eight years. Here's a slide showing our existing affordable housing overlay. This has been in place for 18 years, adopted in 2006 pursuant to, I think, the fourth housing element cycle, and then modified in 2011 and 18 during the fifth housing element cycle. Again, this strip is mostly along El Camino Real. It's in commercial and mixed-use properties, but it allows for residential development that currently requires 50% affordability, which I'll show on this slide. So currently, we require 50% affordability in the affordable housing overlay. The housing overlay would change that to comply with other state laws that actually only require 20% of low income or very low, or 40% moderate. The state did this in a rather pragmatic way. They rolled back the standards for development in a lot of commercial areas statewide in order to encourage more mixed-income housing by requiring less affordable housing units for each development. The thinking on the state is that there'll be more development overall. So the city's existing affordable housing overlay is basically obsolete, because if an applicant comes to us and invokes the correct state law, we have to comply with the state laws that have the 20 and the 40% standard already. But the city still feels like we're encouraging affordable housing through the housing overlay because we're adding these six sites that we committed to in the housing element. I think there's another slide in a minute that'll show the six sites in more detail, and we've had the consultant do some pretty extensive analysis to whittle it down to the six sites. These are larger sites that were identified through the, the housing element process, community meetings, and property owner engagement. And the property owners for five of these six sites were supportive of this housing overlay being overlaid on top of their existing property, because it would allow them the option, if they choose, to provide housing of mixed income on their sites. The sixth site is the city's old city hall site, so that was a city decision. And then the other thing that this will allow is streamlined review for those six sites, and the streamlined review that were required to implement through SB 35 and the rest of the housing overlay. Again, an overlay zone doesn't rezone those six sites. They're all commercial sites. Some of them have successful commercial development on them now. This doesn't mean that you can't provide commercial development in the future. It just allows for housing to be built there also. And that could be on underutilized portions of parking lots that aren't required to serve the commercial redevelopment. It could be wholesale redevelopment, or it could be portions of the site remain commercial, and then they have standalone residential buildings. The city's also required by the housing element to further affordable housing, as is the coastal commission and state HCD. This is a slide showing coastal and HCD's study in the coastal zone that shows it's more rent burdened and there's less availability of. And this requires that whatever lower-cost hotel and actually moderate-cost hotel rooms we have in the coastal zone be either preserved or replaced or mitigated if they're lost. And then likewise, there's some affordable hotel rooms along the same El Camino Real strip in the housing overlay that aren't in the coastal zone but that are adjacent to the coast and the city's downtown that are in El Camino Real South. So those are outside the coastal zone. It's still the city's intent through this ordinance to preserve those lower-cost and moderate hotels as we're allowed to by state law. If we are presented with an application that cites a relevant state law that says we have to allow residential housing or affordable housing or a combination thereof with hotels, the city follows relevant state laws. We simply have policies that are already in our general plan that say in the coastal zone, we preserve existing lower-cost hotel inventory. So that's the challenge we're in through this program, is we have to encourage affordable housing that we committed to. We also have to preserve affordable hotels or encourage that they be replaced. Here's some conceptual site plans. I have more of these that I can go through later. These aren't meant to show the design. These are merely meant to show the six sites that were rezoning, that show that they're feasible for development and redevelopment, and we had to prove this to the state, too, that we selected these sites that could feasibly be redeveloped. Here's a table of our lower-cost hotels. And now I'll get into the objective design standards. I know I just rushed through that series of state laws. I have a lot more hidden slides that I can show, other state laws and the relationship to the Coastal Act if we want to come back to that. But the way we've been going through these Housing Element Action Plan items has been primarily focused on the design standards, and that's the bulk of the zoning amendment that's before you is these standards. These standards would get implemented, again, anytime we're presented a project that's in the city's new housing overlay, or anytime we're presented a project that invokes a state law that may be elsewhere in the city in other commercially-zoned areas or other mixed-use-zoned areas where we're compelled by state law to approve a project with streamlined review. We would invoke these standards. The reason they're standards and not guidelines is because the state requires they be easily interpreted by the architect and the property owner and then by staff so that we can provide that streamlined review rather than going through a hearing process. So the way we formulated these standards, as has been explained in DRSC, we've also had a public meeting on this. We had a public survey that got 42 responses. We reached out to affordable housing developers, and then the consultant ran an analysis on existing buildings that this planning commission and city council have approved and tried to apply design standards on buildings that we already like in town and then on buildings that the property owners of most of these sites felt that could be feasibly developed. And then we overlaid that with our existing architectural design guidelines, the Henry Lenny guidelines, and then our specific plan guidelines and standards. So the way this would be implemented is we'd add a new chapter to the zoning code for these objective design standards. It would have an underlying set of standards, that's like the first 17 pages of the document, that would be design standards that any building provided, it's a qualified affordable housing development project, providing at least the 20% low-income housing or 40% moderate or that cites a relevant state law. Any one of those buildings would have to comply with the general standards. And then this slide, which you can view a more zoomed-in version in your packet, or we can zoom in, we have an online map through the city's GIS that shows four different design districts. Last time, there was questions and there was a typo about the design districts. We've revised them. We're calling them, instead of architectural styles, we're calling them design districts. The biggest design district is number one, and it would allow Mission or Spanish Colonial Revival-style architecture. That's most of the architectural overlay, the Pier Bowl, and then certain other larger parcels in the upper set of town that didn't already have an assigned design criteria. So in most areas where we'd get these projects, we'd allow either SCR or Mission. And then we have the two special design districts where we've kind of invented a set of standards. The Los Molinos recently went through the Los Molinos specific plans. We got most of the design standards from there. And then the Surf Zone is this kind of whimsical, eclectic, Polynesian-island-style set of standards, more open-ended in terms of color and material treatments. So you'd still have to comply with the general sort of site design standards of the objective design standards, but it would be more open-minded, as would the Los Molinos, in terms of color and aesthetics. And so if you're inclined to look through your packet, and we have had individual meetings with most of you, which I'll show, I think I'll skip ahead. We had meetings, sit-down meetings with four of you, and then we got some written comments, I think, from an additional planning commissioner. We got a few additional written comments from members of the public, and staff also made some revisions to the design packet that you looked through in June. And so I think we made 38 changes to the last packet that are shown, or more. We made 44 changes. The majority of those were to the general standards, but some of those were to the Spanish Colonial Revival standards, and then we made the Surf City standards a bit more open-ended. So we can run through those if we wish. They're marked on this table. They're not marked in the zoning amendment packet, because last time we got feedback that it was too wordy in the zoning amendment packet, and we had three different versions with track changes. I'm also happy to provide a version with more track changes. If the planning commission were inclined to provide more changes tonight, I can show the iteration. This is the 10th iteration of the standards. And then the last thing I wanted to show is, these slides are from the consultant. We've had these next four slides available, and have been on the city website and have been discussed by DRSC and were presented before, that kind of show the purpose of objective design standards is more on the form and massing of the building. So we've had these to show, but there was some feedback by planning commissioners and community members and architects that we should have more specific graphics that we incorporate throughout the document. So the consultant did that, and that's now on the public website, and I shared it last week, and it's a whole other document that I won't go through, but it's 40 pages that are attached to the draft standards that show graphic depictions of how staff or an applicant could envision those as the design of project. I don't think we consider each of the graphic depictions as prescriptive or part of the zoning code. It's more of a guidance document, but we think it will be helpful for either the commission to look through over the next couple of weeks or for applicants when they are trying to understand what the standards mean visually. So that's a 40-page PowerPoint that's on the city website that was distributed and that we would make available as a guidance document. These are more of just PowerPoint slides that show what objective design standards are, and this is the Cotton's Point Senior Apartments building that the consultant used for inspiration in drafting the standards in the first place, as well as a few other buildings around town. I think that's what I intended to get through. This is the city website. This is showing that we've had 10 drafts. The last three drafts are still on the website. We'll still take public comment. We're looking for the planning commission to provide guidance to the city council, so if you are inclined to approve or recommend approval of the package we have tonight, the public could still comment before this gets to city council, and staff would still intend to fix some minor corrections and to provide consistency throughout the document. I note Commissioner McCann provided a lot of specific comments that were really helpful on the last iteration, and then you provided more comments that haven't been fully incorporated. So staff would incorporate any changes for consistency and any changes fixing typos. I know you found three typos in the last document, which we should have gotten to. But if Commissioner McCann or other commissioners want to go through more substantive changes to this document, we would have, there's two motions in your packet. You can either continue this, or you could tell us what substantive changes you want us to make before it goes to council, and we'll make them. Or you can provide direction, and we'll bring this back in a continued hearing in two weeks, or if you have a lot of discretion, then we might ask for more than two weeks to incorporate more substantial changes. But these are the two recommendations available on your staff packet, or to recommend approval to the council with minor tweaks and common sense consistency, or to provide more substantive recommendations to staff. And again, if inclined after public comment or any questions to staff, I have a lot more slides on the relevant state laws, if you're wondering how this is all going to work still. So I'll conclude my staff remarks.
Zach, I want to thank you for your dedication to this for the last year. I mean, it's been a while. You've been working on this in a very dedicated fashion, and I just thank you for doing all of that and reaching out to us and all the iterations that you put through and working with the consultant. I think you've, you've done a good job, and I see people turning on their mics up here, so I'm going to go ahead and defer. Start, we'll just start, go, how about if we just start at the end and just go all the way down?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Zach, for a very concise presentation tonight. You define low-cost hotels to be preserved. So walk me through this. If the property owner wants to sell, would there be a restriction on who that property could sell to?
So the way that it would be implemented through this program is specific to any hotels that are in the proposed housing overlay along El Camino Real, of which we think there's about 12 or 15. There's an inventory of the city's existing affordable hotels, which not all of those are covered by this recommended housing overlay. But what the staff is recommending is to add footnotes to the zoning code under the allowable uses that would say that in the housing overlay, affordable housing or mixed-income housing or, in some cases, market-rate housing is an allowable use in the commercial areas and in the mixed-use areas, where in some other commercial areas of the city, it wouldn't be unless some other state law were applicable.
So it's either or. So it could roll over to commercial or it could roll over to residential? If the property owner wants to sell?
The footnote says that whether or not it's the current property owner or anyone that sells, it says within five years, if it were to be turned over or converted into any housing project, market-rate or affordable, that they would have to either replace it or provide some mitigation, which is going to be a substantial challenge if you have a constrained site and you'd rather have residential than a hotel. Pursuant to our general plan and our commitment to the Coastal Commission, which is in about half of this, right now and with this ordinance, you would have to provide some other version of affordable hotel rooms somewhere else or a very large fee. This would allow, you could wait five years before you redeveloped the site, and then you could go ahead and have it be mixed-income residential or 100% affordable. Or if you invoked a relevant state law that, you know, there's state laws that are more narrowly tailored than this ordinance. If you invoke a state law, the city complies with state law. We have policies in the general plan and in the zoning code that say, specific to density bonus and other state laws, we have to do our best to also be consistent with our general plan as it relates to the affordable overnight accommodations. But if an applicant or project proponent, especially for 100% affordable project, comes forward, the city will follow applicable state laws. So those are the two exceptions. Wait five years or present a project that is otherwise compliant with state housing law.
And what is the 12, what's the feedback from the 12 owners of those properties?
We haven't received comment from the owners of those properties on that provision. We've received feedback from community members, the San Clemente Affordable Housing Coalition and the Kennedy Commission that are opposed to that position because it would make it more difficult to convert those hotels into affordable housing.
Okay, thank you very much.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, Scott?
I assume right now we're talking questions to staff, and then you're going to open a public hearing and all that?
Yes, we have three speakers.
Right. I am, what's the, I know that there's some urgency and timing on this. What is that? And what happens if we, what's the practical implication if we don't hit that?
I'm going to be a little bit vague, and the city attorney could get into more detailed provisions of housing element law, but we committed through our housing element to implement these programs by the end of this year. And at the end of this year, well, actually, in March of next year, we have to provide the state housing community development department with an annual progress report. They review those reports, they have a table, and they make a determination themselves on whether the city is complying with its commitments in the housing element, or at least demonstrating progress through our annual progress reports. If they feel that we're not, then we start to get letters saying we're out of compliance. And if they deem us very much out of compliance, the entire housing element, they could require us to rewrite, or they could decertify the housing element.
Okay, thank you.
Questions? Okay, any questions?
I've got three. What's a market-rate project? Does that mean no subsidies?
Yeah, that means that the property owner could develop a 10-unit apartment building and rent them for whatever the market demand is. And what we're recommending is more mixed-income buildings, where that 10-unit building would have to have two of the units rented or sold to an affordable housing nonprofit at a low-income level.
And is there a legend anywhere when we come to like the table like this on page 31, that say if the public just picked it up, you know, what does C mean? What does, when the box is empty mean? What does MC mean? Page 31?
Oh.
Is there going to be a legend?
I think there is a legend, not on every page, but maybe on the last page of each section. P means it's a permitted use. C means it's a conditional use. So what we're proposing to change is some of the uses that are A, not allowed or require conditional use permit, we're proposing to make permitted uses.
Can you show me where the legend is? Because I, and what does it mean when it's blank, so that the public would know?
If it's blank, it means you cannot provide that use right now. So if it's currently blank, like for some of the cells for senior housing, right now you couldn't build senior housing. In addition to affordable housing, we're proposing to make senior housing more.
No, but I don't see a legend. So maybe we could make sure that we have a legend in this, so that if a member of the public picks it up, they know what the P, the PC, or an empty square means.
Yeah, commissioners, the packet in front of you is going to be, it's excerpts, so we didn't include the full sections of the code. It's really, yeah, so when you're looking at our mixed-use regulations, the first box is PMCC and O, and explains what those uses are, so that when they go to that section of our code, that's the first table that they'll see.
It's not here, though.
It's not in that, because we're not proposing to make any changes to that table.
Okay, and then, do you have any comment on one of the letters that was proposed that says, let's, 8C, it's from the housing, says that like we're way out of whack? Yes. Yeah. It's at the end of the packet already. Right. Do you have any comment on the third, on the second paragraph that says putting the city at legal peril?
If I can weigh in, it's not the city's intention to be in legal peril, and it's not our intention to thumb our nose at State HCD. We believe these actions would implement four of the programs that we committed to, and if the commission and then the city council were to go with the tenor, the general guideline of these programs as written in the housing element and as recommended here, we'd be able to say we're implementing four of the programs. We don't think that going from the 50% affordability level in the current affordable housing overlay down to the 20% or 40% moderate, we don't think that's in opposition to HCD. And then the hotel-motel thing, we have to do our best to strike a balance between state housing laws and our commitments under the Coastal Act, and then the city's zoning code, which right now doesn't allow for full-scale conversion of all those hotels into market-rate or residential units. So we think we're implementing the housing element. We think HCD is generally supportive of this approach. The biggest risk would be to do nothing, to deny the whole packet and not take any action. HCD would not like that. If you want to make changes to try to strike a better compromise, I think that that would be supportable.
Okay, thanks. That's it. Okay. All right, if there's no more questions, I'm going to turn to public comments then. All right, we've got three speaker cards, and I'll just call them all. And then the first one, Jordan Docky, I'm not sure, can read the writing properly. Okay, thank you. Rachel Davidson, followed by Kathy Estefani. So you are Jordan?
I am.
All right, well, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for being patient.
Yeah, of course.
To all of you, thank you for being patient.
Yeah, I'm glad so many people are here. So hello, I'm Jordan. I am a member of the San Clemente Affordable Housing Coalition, and I am in opposition of some of the proposed changes to the affordable housing overlay. Specifically, I oppose the proposed changes that let developers take advantage of the benefits of the overlay without providing any very low-income affordable housing. The current affordable housing overlay requiring 51% of very low-income units is the part of this overlay that's important to me as a San Clemente resident for over five years now, because our city does need more of this type of housing for our very low-income residents. The second thing I oppose in this proposal without providing any very low-income affordable housing. The current affordable housing overlay requiring 51% of very low-income units is the part of this overlay that's important to me as a San Clemente resident for over five years now, because our city does need more of this type of housing for our very low-income residents. The second thing I oppose in this proposal is to prohibit the conversion of aging motels into affordable housing or permanent supportive housing. Utilizing existing infrastructure to provide affordable housing to residents is a good use of our resources. And so I'm against the restriction of this sustainable solution to provide affordable housing. Both of these proposed changes to the zoning code will make it much more difficult for San Clemente to create affordable housing for our lower-income residents, housing that they really need. So therefore, that is why I'm opposed to these changes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments tonight. And then we have Rachel Davidson. Welcome.
Thank you. Happy to hear that San Clemente is prioritizing affordable housing. The first comment I want to make is that I feel that the moderate-income units should not qualify as affordable housing for purposes of the new housing overlay. The 40% of the moderate income looks a lot like market-rate housing that there is plenty of. And what we really need to focus on is making low-income more accessible to people that are actually lower income. Secondly, I know this isn't, it was discussed about opposing the restriction of conversion of motels. I just want to make that a comment, that what Jordan said, creating opportunities, sustainable opportunities, to have those conversions be for housing and not return to the market that is unaffordable for low-income residents. I also want to add that as myself, a single working parent of two teenagers, I strongly encourage the city to prioritize affordable housing for extremely low and very low-income and low-income households. Affordable housing is about accessibility, and community development should not create exclusivity. I really love my neighborhood, it's mixed income. And I would love for all of us to be able to stay in the city where we have our children, where we do community service, where we utilize the many resources that are available to San Clemente residents that I feel that we are all entitled to. And I am glad that this project is focusing on all of our residents of San Clemente and making it affordable place to live and not an exclusive place to live entirely.
All right, well, thank you for your comments tonight. And again, staying late. And then our final speaker is Kathy.
Good evening, I'm Kathy Estefani. I'm the chair of the San Clemente Affordable Housing Coalition. You have two letters from us. The first letter was on September 17th, where we stated our opposition to the proposed amendment to the affordable housing overlay. What we opposed was changing the sort of housing developments that can qualify for the benefits of the overlay. Under the existing affordable housing overlay, as has been said, it's 51% very low income. There is a drastic change in the current proposal to allow 40% moderate incomes to qualify as affordable housing. That's absolutely unacceptable to us, because the need is for very low and low. We also oppose the change to the rules regarding motel conversions into affordable housing, as has been mentioned. The second letter today got to you just before the start of the meeting, so you probably have not had a chance to read it. But it expands and clarifies the arguments made in the September 17th letter. If I can summarize the two, the arguments. The first is that the proposed changes to the housing overlay are inconsistent with the Housing Action Plan, which commits the city to facilitate lower-income housing. And the focus is on lower-income housing, not moderate. And please see today's letter for those points. Secondly, the proposed changes fail to address the very real needs of the community for low and very low-income housing. I'd like to, and today's letter makes this point quite well, I think. It points to the housing element itself and information in that element. Table 2-24 talks about what is affordable monthly rent based on Orange County AMI. And for, let's, let's take the example of a four-person household, two parents, two kids. A four-person household at extremely low income can earn up to $38,450 annually. Affordable rent for that family is $689. For a very low-income family, it's $64,050 a year income, and their affordable rent is $1329 a month. I'm gonna jump down because I'm running out of time. But moderate income makes up to $123,000 a year, and affordable rent for them is $2,800 a month. Look at another table, table 2-23, which tells you what average rent in San Clemente is for a two-bedroom apartment. And that is, can I finish the sentence? Affordable rent for moderate, I've said it's $2,800. The average rent in San Clemente for a two-bedroom apartment is $2449. So moderate income already has housing that they can afford available in San Clemente. It's the lower income which is not available, and which this planning commission should focus its efforts on. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you for your letters and your patience to testify and give your comments tonight. Thank you. That concludes our public comments unless somebody else wants to... Sir, did you want to speak? You're the only one left that hasn't spoken. Okay. You're a good man. All right, then, that concludes our public comments for tonight. What do you guys want to do? You want more discussion with the staff?
Do we have to take some kind of a vote to keep going, based on the time?
That would be at 11:00 PM.
Yeah, okay, cool.
Yeah.
So I guess our options are to go through some of the... I mean, there's some high-level concepts in here, but then there's the detail with respect to the design standards. What's your, what's your preferences for how you want to proceed with the detailed stuff? Do you, do you feel, does everyone have a chance to look at it? Are they, do you want to cherry pick any concerns? Or do you want to go page by page? What do you guys want to do?
For me?
Yeah.
I did prepare markups, which I copied and on, you know, you're, and I can walk through. Mine is all detail stuff.
Okay.
Not high level. So I'm, but I also don't want to monopolize this conversation. So at some point, I'd like to go through my suggested changes or thoughts. But it certainly doesn't need to be first or top of mind.
Okay. So you're, 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 you don't want to go through the whole thing? You just want to go through your comments, and you're good?
Well, I've been through the whole thing.
Yeah.
And I only have comment, I, I've, my comments are focused on where they are.
Yeah, okay.
I don't need to reread it. But if other people have other comments, I want to hear them.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah. I think a couple of things. We should go through what our fellow commissioners are recommending, but we should also discuss the items that we heard from the public tonight.
Okay.
That might be our first order of business, I would think. Because those are sort of over...
Those are the bigger pieces, yeah.
And how do we want to respond to those, which might include additional questions to Zach, you know, or to staff?
Right.
To clarify why, I mean, what I'm hearing is that, you know, the state is trying to sort of kick-start the development of housing. And that's the reason that they've made it, you know, less restrictive in terms of having to provide as much affordable housing, because developers are not gonna build something. They're not gonna develop something that doesn't pencil. And the state is finally realizing that you can't force developers to build affordable housing if it doesn't, doesn't make money, right? Unless they're subsidizing, which there's some of that going on, I understand. So maybe that can be a topic of discussion. I didn't mean to take off here and start.
So really, there's a policy, and then there's the standards. So if you want, I think we could break it into two pieces.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you're, you're saying we should have a policy discussion, and then once we conclude that, we can see what time it is and decide what we want to do with respect to the standards. How's that? Does that sound like a good approach? Gary, you good?
I'm ready to approve it.
Okay, Gary's good.
The council has the final.
Well, and I don't really want to...
We've worked a lot on this.
We've spent a lot of time on this multiple times. So I don't think we need to go through every item right now. I would like to go through Commissioner McCann's and, you know, any others. You know, I don't have any to add tonight. I mean, I noticed a few typos. Like it's a rage, or it's a range, I don't know what was that.
That was on one of those.
That was on a slide.
One of those, okay.
All right, how do you guys want to go through the policy? Should we have staff lead us, or does somebody have a particular method they want to go with?
I think, I think Zach could probably elaborate a little bit more on the comments that he made, and just maybe give us a little bit of insight into the direction that we should be going to be in compliance and really be a little more pragmatic and realistic about coming up with something that's, that's reasonable and that is gonna happen, you know, it's gonna get done.
Can you include the timeframe?
Is that something that you can do, Zach, or?
Yeah, I could give you five more minutes of context. And then I think Jonathan had a couple of comments on the hotel conversion issue.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Is everyone good with that? Zach, go ahead, you have the floor.
Okay, I've got about 10 more slides. I think I can go four or five minutes. And I would say that Commissioner Camp's synopsis of the state's thinking is my understanding as well. I was at a planning conference this week, and there was a presentation by a State HCD person, and they were explaining that they're trying to be more realistic in terms of the housing needs that are being met. And just on the city's perspective, we've committed through this program here to changing our housing overlay into an affordable, our affordable housing overlay into a housing overlay, which implements state laws that were passed actually back in 2022. And then the other context is more state laws get passed year after year. So we just weren't seeing any projects, and the state recognized this, that were 51% affordable. You either get the developer that pencils out the project that provides the minimum that the state allows them to do pursuant to a few different state laws, SB 35 and the density bonus law primarily. Or you get 100% affordable projects that have lots more incentives and tax credits, and that that's the purpose of the project from the beginning, is to provide 100% affordable housing. The city affordable housing overlay with the 51%, I went back and I couldn't find any projects that were at that 51% ratio from the past decade. We've had it since 2006. We have approved projects that are 100% affordable. The city has those projects, and we've approved senior housing projects that receive subsidies. And the city has directly provided subsidies to affordable housing developers and provided use of city property, even to affordable housing developers, to provide that kind of housing. But that wasn't happening through the incentives or the rules of the affordable housing overlay. That was a project-by-project negotiation or tax credit that was being received. So that's why in the next few slides, the programs we committed to were providing byright approvals for projects that had 20% affordable units. And that's pulled straight from SB 35, the state law, which is also included in the density bonus law, that says the city has to provide certainty and objective design standards and streamlined review so that property owners can redevelop their sites with a usually 80% market rate and 20% low income or very low income. And the other thing this requires is that we have candidate sites that are rezoned, or instead of rezoning, we're doing this overlay that applies the housing overlay on top of the existing commercial zoning. Within three years of the deadline of the sixth cycle, which was 2021, we ended up getting approved in 2022, but we said by the end of '24, we would do this. And then we have our sites from the last housing element cycle that were already approved by the previous council in the previous housing element eight years before, where redevelopment could occur. So these are all the sites we looked at. It's A through U, the city went through this process, we consulted with property owners, we looked at our code. These are outside of the housing overlay, but these are the sites where we felt we might get some mixed-income housing, mostly large commercial shopping centers, some, there's an open space parcel up in the Talega area that's one of the sites, and then the city hall is one of the sites. These aren't mostly the sites along El Camino Real, a lot of these are on Pico. And these are all the sites we looked at. We picked six of them, and we actually picked portions of six of them in areas where we felt like a large shopping center wasn't gonna be redeveloped in total, but maybe portions of, for example, the Target. We think it's unlikely the whole Target will get redeveloped, but there's a Target Out parcel site where they have excess overflow parking that wasn't required as part of their conditional use permit, and they could redevelop part of their Target site with some affordable or mixed-market-rate housing. And then we've got Pico Plaza is probably the biggest site. That whole site and the property owner were supportive of some kind of redevelopment over this eight-year cycle, so we have that entire site selected. And then we went through the consultant, and we made conceptual site plans for most of those sites, as well as some smaller sites along El Camino Real to show what was feasible, given the existing density in the city's residential medium, residential high, and then market-rate projects that could be developed on commercial or mixed-use sites. So generally trying to allow the kind of density you'd see in an RM or RH district to see if that's gonna be feasible in the commercial areas. These are some of the conceptual site plans. They don't look great, they're just boxes on the map, but the, all these numbers that the consultant went through took into account the setbacks in the parking calculations, and found that these sites could be feasibly developed, and thus we added them to our table that the state reviewed and said these were adequate sites to plan for more housing to be developed over the next eight years. It doesn't mean they're gonna be developed exactly like this. Some might not get developed at all in the eight years. We went above and beyond what RENA would have required of us. We had those targets for very low and low and moderate. We're doing enough reallocation in housing overlay to allow about twice as many affordable, or a category of affordable is the moderate rate, that there's the very low, low, moderate. And the state actually now has seven different categories of what they call affordable. There's seven buckets of affordable housing. But we have about double what would have been our target, because we don't think that every single one of these sites is gonna get redeveloped, or some might not get redeveloped with maximum density. This is a slide showing, I think, what some of the public commentators were saying, that these limits are set by the state, and actually, the state indirectly goes through federal housing and urban development. And these are the income levels that you need to have to qualify to live in one of the units that has a covenant recorded or that's rented out by the, either the developer, or sometimes the developer sells the units to a qualified nonprofit. And right now, there's five categories, and then it's got the median income in Orange County and Bold. There's gonna be seven categories as of January 1st. The only two that we put in the housing overlay are ones that would already be allowed by state law. If a developer invoked state law, they relate usually to low or very low income, and then there's a different category for moderate income. And the moderate income is often pretty close, or sometimes higher than the median income. These are people's household annual income. There's another table that shows how much you could turn around and rent the apartment for, and I guess that's where the $2,800 comes from. For new units, the moderate income does tend to fall below the market-rate rental in a town. And also, you have to consider the market-rate apartment rental is not for brand-new construction. It's usually for, you know, the average rental in a town, and it might not be on El Camino Real, where some of these buildings are gonna be. So even if they do end up being rented at a moderate rate, they're gonna be slightly lower than the median income and the median market rental citywide, and they'll be in a desirable area, and there'll be new construction. So that's why the state incentivizes that kind of development. Most developers that I've spoken with on the phone, and also in the study session that we held that included property owners and just regular for-profit market-rate developers and affordable developers, the opinion I've heard more often is that the 20% low income is more attractive from an economic standpoint than the 40% moderate, just because they want to maximize the number of market-rate units they can have, especially if the city allows the market-rate units to be, you know, the corner units are the ones that they may be able to sell, maximize their profit by selling more units. So I think we're likely to see projects that, you know, along El Camino Real, we may see 10-unit projects that have eight market-rate units and then two rented at the low income. If you get these larger sites, you're probably gonna see the larger sites that want to maximize the total number of units. So you may see more of the moderate income, like if all of Pico Plaza gets redeveloped. But the smaller projects are probably gonna be going with the low income. Both categories are categories of housing that we need to meet our regional housing needs assessment and comply with our other commitments in the housing element. I think I'm almost out of the five minutes I said I was gonna take, but I have, these slides are on the hotels. This is the Coastal Act that has a specific policy saying you've got to preserve your lower-cost visitor hotels. They also have a category of moderate-cost hotels that you're supposed to preserve. Here's a study by the Coastal Commission saying all the low-cost hotels statewide are kind of disappearing. They're either turning into residential, or they're turning into high-cost hotels. They're either turning into residential or they're turning into high-cost hotels. Here's a slide saying you have to be compliant with the coastal act and state law on housing. So cities have to find a way to comply with the commitments we've made to the coastal commission as well as the commitments and the state laws related to housing. Nothing in this section supersedes the coastal act. These are all rules related to parking that I didn't even get into, but most of these projects are going to have reduced parking requirements. And that has to blend with the coastal act. The coastal act often wants more parking because coastal visitors like parking and the city tends to provide minimum parking requirements for residential development. And then I was just going to show one more slide on the coastal from the city's general plan. These are the policies, especially that last one, LU 43. This is in the city's general plan already as part of our coastal land use plan. And it says prohibit the loss of existing lower cost hotels, including hotels, motels or inns or campsites unless they're replaced with comparable facilities or mitigation or in-lu fees are provided to other lower cost overnight visitor accommodations in the city or the coastal zone. So this is what we've committed to in about half of the housing overlay area. The other half of the housing overlay area is close to the coastal zone and the coastal commission probably will still give us credit when we create another inventory like this that shows the city is at least trying to provide some lower cost or moderate cost hotels for visitors. And if we get that kind of credit, they may not require us to provide the same mitigation when we get new hotels, like the new hotels that are being reviewed by the planning commission. If the city starts to lose all of our lower cost hotels, the coastal commission is going to take a stricter stance on brand new hotels, which tend to be higher cost. So it's in the city's interest to preserve our hotel rooms, both for our own visitors who come to town and visit, you know, friends and family and want to go to the coast. But it's also in our interest because we'll get along better with the coastal commission on our local coastal program efforts and applicants of future hotels will have an easier time if we preserve some of the existing lower cost hotels that we have.
I see it on here now. I was going to question the campsites. How does that play into the hotels or?
We don't think this project's going to affect the campsites. We don't see campsites being turned into housing and these are, this is in the state park, so I don't think the state park is going to sell to a housing developer. This table was just provided when we did our last coastal update in 2017, 18, and we have to update this again in the next few months to show the coastal commission our current inventory of hotel rooms. And this is only showing the ones in the coastal zone along the northern portion of El Camino Real. It doesn't show El Camino Real South. But we'll probably update it to show the ones just outside the coastal zone that we still count as part of our city inventory.
Okay. But preserving that, does that help us?
Preserving these, especially the ones that say low or moderate helps us. Some of the ones in the coastal zone are already high cost or high moderate. And then the other thing that will help us is if we provide some certainty of, you know, the rules if a hotel is going to turn over into either market rate housing or affordable housing, if we have some certainty that state HCD and coastal can review. Because right now we don't have any zoning code that can kind of blend the two priorities. So it's going to be hard for staff and it's going to be hard for those two agencies if we don't have any policies. That's why the policy we have says try to preserve them. If they've been vacant for five years, they're in a state of disrepair, they have a new property owner, then they can turn over. Or if some other state housing law or HCD is telling us you have to approve this and the property owner provides legal justification, then we will provide, we'll comply with state law and approve it. But generally it's our policy to do our best to preserve it.
My ad isn't long, but in the conversation about the hotel conversions, so within the goals that we have, so I'm referencing, this is on page 103 of our housing element, but within goal 5.3 related to equal housing opportunity, the specific goal that was referenced or strategy that was referenced is encourage redevelopment and adaptive reuse of infill sites and properties in affordable housing overlay zone such as conversion of residential motels to apartments. So acknowledging the language that's within that and yet also being very clear about the language that's within that, a couple of things. First, reminding everyone that what Zach said earlier is always at play, like nothing within this supersedes state law. So there'll be likely certain cases where conversions are allowed pursuant to state law if they meet certain criteria, which all the different possibilities are not enumerated within this ordinance, but we do clarify that the city will comply with state law. Coming to the specific language though, the reference of residential motels, if you're looking up definitional standards of a residential motel, that is going to be a motel that has occupants that are already living there longer term and looking at converting those facilities that already largely function as residential properties into formal residential properties. We don't have too many facilities within the lists here that have been referenced that we are aware of are functioning in that way. If there was a scenario where, you know, someone came forward and had that type of evidence, then that would be an additional consideration that staff would take into account. This, the housing element process that we went through paralleled some state efforts. You may have heard of Project Home Key that occurred during COVID and subsequent to where there was significant state funding related to using motel and hotel facilities on a temporary basis for residential purposes. And so I think that this policy largely was aimed at unknowing yet whether the city or any of these facilities in the city might take advantage of that program, that those types of facilities would be prime candidates because they were already effectively functioning as residential facilities. None of the motels in San Clemente did participate in that program. So it's not quite the same scenario that's there. So I just wanted to highlight that difference that the term residential is intentional and significant within that context there. And finishing again with, we do always follow state law.
Okay, so let's just zero in, I guess, on this particular issue. The staff is recommending the six sites. So let me just do a poll. Are we okay with the six sites? No discussion on those? Okay. Now they're recommending that the 20%. Zach, is that very low and low, the 20% or just low?
The state law SB 35 that we tried to mirror says very low or low. It's my experience that most property owners are going to pick low because then they can charge more rent.
But to the point, what you're proposing includes very low.
It would allow very low or low.
Yeah. Okay.
So Sarah Cho.
Yeah.
And then the 40% moderate?
That's their other choice. They could provide 40% moderate and 60% market rate and no low. And that's what you're hearing concern about from our community is they're concerned we're giving away all of our very low and our low and we're just going to get projects with the 40% moderate.
So let's discuss that. Where you, how do we want to, let's take the, let's have a discussion on that particular point right there. The 40% moderate. Let's discuss that.
I'm going to defer to Zach because he just went to Sacramento and he already explained that they're not having the results that they're looking for.
Okay.
Well, also he said he, there hasn't been even a, you know, most people are going to go with the 20% low because they can get more market rate.
Yeah.
So I see it as being a positive, you know, that we could actually see some projects.
Okay. Yeah. So you want to, does anyone want to change this?
I don't see any need at this point.
Okay. All right. Then there's the provision of to preserve the motels. Does anyone want to change that?
I don't want to change it, but I don't understand how the city is supposed to preserve the low-priced hotels. I mean, I don't get it. They're privately owned. So.
But they can't raise them.
It's zoning. So if the zone says this is what you can do with your land, that's what the city's saying is that's what the city is controlling.
The city's, I've never seen zoning, maybe I'm about to stick my foot in my mouth, but I mean zoning code normally doesn't say what, you know, you can charge for a hotel room or what price home you can put on. It talks about units per acre or?
Let me put the issue back in focus. The issue is you have a commercial property with a use zoned for lodging, overnight lodging.
Okay, got it.
Do you want to change that to allow it to be housing? So you could sell it and now it can be housing? That's the change. And what the city is saying is no, we don't want to do that because we need to preserve our moderate and low motels. So we do not want to change that.
Okay, but if someone wants to tear it down or go through and renovate it and upgrade it and they can get more in rent on a nightly basis, can the city prevent that?
No, that's what the state is mandating.
Yeah, well, and there's multiple considerations there. So if you tear it down and you're within the coastal zone, you're going to need a coastal development permit and those policies that were referenced are going to be at play. So the coastal commission cannot set a rate, but they will use that policy to extract exactions from someone who does a complete tear down and rebuild of a facility.
Yeah, they won't get a permit without dedicating affordable units.
Okay, what about renovations? Or is it still a coastal, same issue?
Potentially, well, so if they have a CDP or approval for the project as is and they're, you know, upgrading the interior of the building with building permits, that typically is not going to trigger something of a different or trigger a new opportunity for exactions on that project.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, I'm going to go back to that as well because that was my original question. So if we, if they are mandated, I guess that would be the word. I'm looking for any other word other than mandated. But what does that do to, if they can't, if they have to be preserved as is and they want to sell their property to do something else with it, what does this do to their property owner as a business owner? I mean, what does this housing, what does this do?
Well, it forces them.
It forces them into one direction after they've already made the investment and also doesn't give them much incentive to improve on their property.
I'm not tracking that because.
That's where you see those motels staying.
Yeah, if you, let's say you buy your home and that's zoned residential and you go, well, I own this. I think I want to make it a hotel. That's what you're saying. That's the argument you're making is.
It's not a business though. I'm looking at a business. I'm, see, my home is a resident. I'm looking at an actual business where you are making money off, you know, you went into business to make money, to make a profit. But now if you're mandated to do A, B, or C, or just A, then that takes off the table your other options to make money. And that was the whole business or improve upon your business.
So I'm not following that because it's, this is a planning to conversation and what we're talking about here is zoning. So when you do city planning and zoning, you lay it out and you say this is a commercial district, this is a commercial zone for reasons that make sense. And then what, to just say, well, I bought knowing that this is a commercial zone for motels, well, I think I want to change that now and I want to make this into housing. That's, doesn't necessarily mean there's a taking there. It means that you're now proposing a new use.
A new use. So you're adding to it.
Well, or you're.
Or you're taking away from it.
You're completely converting the current use and eliminating it. So in other words, our zoning basically calls for a balance of uses. We have TOT that comes from our motels. We have certain balance requirements we need to make in terms of hosting events, people coming in town to stay overnight so they can participate in our shopping, our restaurants. And if we start losing that, we start losing TOT, we start losing other revenue in other parts of town because people have no place to stay. And we also find ourselves sideways with the coastal commission who is saying, we want to encourage overnight lodging and we want a variety of pricing. And now you're, don't have that anymore. So that's, I think what the staff is saying is that we need to preserve overnight lodging and just because there might be a different use, that's fine. You find another place to put the use, but this is something that they're trying to point out that we have very limited, very limited number of hotel rooms in San Clemente. Like it's under 300 and even less for the low. And so to start losing that starts changing the economics of the town and starts changing, it could change the character of those neighborhoods as well. Because so it's, that's what I'm hearing from the staff. I mean, Zach, if you want to talk further about that, but that's what I think you're saying.
What does it mean to that business owner if he wants, he or she wants to sell the hotel? Take any one of these six that you're listing. If they want to sell their hotel, okay, what does this list do to them?
It's not a substantial change from the current condition for them as property owners. They're not getting the same new benefits that some of their peers that don't have lower cost hotels that run a dry cleaning business or a empty parking lot. Those people are getting a benefit because they can now provide housing on their commercial lots. These owners wouldn't be able to provide housing on their commercial lots, but they can still provide hotels. They can upgrade their hotels, make nicer paint and carpet and charge more money if they can make their hotel more attractive.
Because these six are listed, right, in our plan? Do they have to offer, yeah, as the first option, a low housing, you know, group, the opportunity to buy the property first?
No, the city might be compelled due to the Land Surplus Act that we could talk about on some of the city sites.
So it's not like we've identified, you know, the Target site or the other sites that we identified that, you know, if they ever became available, they would be offered
This wouldn't require that of these individual hotel owners, no. This is simply not giving them the opportunity now to convert to housing, that some of the other lots would have the opportunity to convert to housing right away.
If they want to do.
If they want to. They can still remain a hotel. They can turn into a different kind of commercial use.
If it's allowed by the zoning.
Can they do a mixed use?
If it's allowed by the underlying zoning without any of the extra incentives that you get for providing the affordable housing, if they can have mixed use, they can still have mixed use.
And we've seen some development of those properties. That's about all we've seen.
Yeah, that's, that's it.
So it's not like when you have a federal property or a state property become available on the open market, that the first option has to go to a, not, I mean, a low, you know, not a low, what would we call the, a low income developer who would develop low income units on it?
Yeah, this would not require that and the city couldn't compel them to sell to a particular owner.
As long as there's choices.
Yeah, I think we have to leave it.
I think so too. I don't, I don't think it makes sense to change that or have unattended consequences of different incentives.
Yeah, it's already a problem with the lack of hotel rooms in our city.
Yes, so especially affordable ones. I mean, yes, so there are very low income people that want to travel and stay in our town and we don't want to take those opportunities away either. So it's robbing the pay, Peter, pay, I mean, it's, you know, it's about, it's always everything in moderation and balance. And so we're not looking, it's not like we're talking about thousands of units here. It's under 300 and the low units are 18. We're talking over 18 units. So that's it. I mean, if we lose that, we have none. Okay, I think those are the policy issues. Have I missed any policy issues, Zach? I think these are the core policy issues. Oh, and we have the districts, right? We have the, the other policy district is the Surf Zone, the Los Molinos Zone, the Spanish Colonial, all of that. I think each, we all talked about that in our individual meetings, so I don't know that that, I don't really have any change with that. I think this was a good idea to do that.
Are we seeing any projects coming forward in the Surf Zone or the Los Molinos?
We haven't had a Surf Zone before. That would be.
This would be new.
Correct. Los Molinos, we have a specific plan for and we have seen some commercial development there. That's also often surf industry, even though it's Los Molinos in a surf district. It was called the Surf Ghetto for a while. So there's some small surf businesses, there's a brewery.
There's a small apartment.
So it's no longer going to be called Surf Ghetto?
We call it Los Molinos now, Los Molinos. I mean.
I kind of like the Surf Ghetto.
That's a nickname. You can still call it, you can still call it the nickname, but we're going to call it Los Molinos District.
We are trying to get away from Surf City. That was a mistake that we don't want to be associated with our peer cities that have Surf Cities. So we're calling it the Surf Zone.
Yeah, so we are, at this point, I think we've hit the key policy issues. And then we have, and we've already discussed expanding our housing overlay. So we're expanding that. And we discussed that those sites are fine. We've discussed the qualification, the Qualified Affordable Housing Development Standards and also the motels. So I think that just leaves the objective design standards. And my, Zach, just please check me on that to make sure I haven't sidestepped any important policy issue that we should discuss.
There is the parking policy issue, but again, that's kind of prescribed by state law and that wasn't referenced by any comment letters we've received. We tried to strike a balance there too. We said generally you have to provide parking unless state law says you don't have to provide parking or if you qualify for density bonus. Or if you demonstrate that your site, in order to meet the density required to provide the housing expected by our housing element and to provide the affordable housing, if you can show in order to fill up your site with the housing units, you have to provide less parking. That, that's one of the rationales that we've accepted through this.
I think it's important to point out that if a qualified affordable housing development project comes in, essentially what the benefit that they're going to get is ministerial approval. Is that correct?
Yeah, ministerial approval, more certainty before they even begin the process. They can still submit a pre-application if they want to get even more certainty or go to DRSC or make sure their project as they've penciled it, make sure staff agrees that they're meeting the standards.
But no public hearings.
And the state laws, but no public hearings. Generally, we have to approve things on a pretty tight time clock.
So that really takes us to the objective design standards because that's what they would be, that's what their project would be evaluated against.
Yeah, and then I guess the last thing that we've emphasized a few times is they don't have to comply with all the objective design standards on all these sites. They can say, we want to deviate a bit in design because our site constraints require it or because we want to provide Spanish Colonial Revival in the Surf Zone, even though the city has this other vision. And then they would have the option of just going to the zoning administrator or the planning commission. If they, they don't want to comply with the objective design standards, they can go through the regular process. And that's also a good thing for staff to tell them, if you want this incentive, you have to comply. If you don't want the incentive, go through a hearing.
So Scott, did you want to lead us off with your comments? Thank you.
I will try and burn through these. And these are just my comments or observations. So you were handed a printout with my scribbling on it, but we don't need that actually. And these pages, I sent them in two separate emails when I was out of town and so they came through separately. So let's go to the back, about halfway through, look at the bottom and see page four. Page four of 51 at the bottom.
Give me a second to find that. Is that towards the back?
It's about.
I got it. It's almost second, it's third to last.
Yeah, so what I did is I, I printed out the version that was provided for the last proposed meeting on September 17th. And then I just hand marked them up so it's easier to see. So this comment is, it talks about creating minimum landscape buffers and the ground cover or shrubs shall have be a minimum of 32 inches in height after two years of growth. In other places, it talks about a minimum of 30 inches and a maximum of 42 inches, which seems awfully specific. And most ground cover that I know doesn't get to 30 inches tall. It seems to me like it should just be a maximum of 30 inches. So that's my comment. And then they talk about one tree per 25 lineal feet built into adjacent. And it seems to me that those are too frequent. Particularly it depends on the tree species that you, that you have. So again, these are my comments. I don't necessarily want to, I kind of think I just burned through them all and then we could. I don't know how the best.
I'm fine with those.
How to best attack this. Okay, so next page at the bottom, it says page six. Okay, this, this I have an issue with. It talks about in multifamily projects over 30 units, the location of parking drives shall be internal to the site and not located around the periphery of the site of the edge adjacent to public streets where visible from public view. This is not site friendly design for the project itself. I can see that it makes it more aesthetic for the properties around it. But, you know, having an internal parking courtyard in the middle of a project, to me, it's, it's not good design and it's not, it's also inefficient use of space. I mean, you have to have drive aisles and fire lanes and everything to get into these spaces. So I don't think that's great.
Well, can I just.
Please, please do.
So interestingly, we just received a submittal, if you recall.
Which one?
At DRSC.
Oh, level on, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The driveway down the center.
Right.
And though I wasn't enthralled with the way they developed that drive, I think it was a better project as a result because of the view from the street, which is curb appeal, which affects, I think, both the public and, you know, the perception from the city as well as the value of the property and the law. So, and I've seen a lot of projects. Should this be, you know, mandated? Is that what we're talking about with 30 dwelling units or more? Maybe not, but I just want to point out that, you know, there's a lot of projects where that's the case and it is done well and it is a benefit. And 30 units, that's quite a few units.
That's what I.
We're not going to get that many projects of 30 units in our town.
Right.
That one was 18, which we thought was too dense.
Yeah.
Right, that we were looking at.
I think this is not going to happen.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think.
That would even worry about it.
That's, okay, that's probably true. And I agree on that side. It was a good design. Moving on, garage number three. Garage entries, loading and service entries, utility room stairs, elevators and other similar elements shall occupy no more than 20% of the width of the public street facing building facade. To me, that's site dependent. It doesn't necessarily work on narrow parcels. I mean, again, a lot of these things are, it's site dependent and how does a site work with the proposed?
Yeah, I think if we can achieve the intent without being that specific.
Yeah, I think this is meant to be not, this is meant to be general for somebody who's coming in by right to get something. And if they have a unique parcel and this doesn't work, okay, so then the streamline doesn't work for them. They need to step out of that and have a conversation with the staff and work it out.
Right, we're just, you know, in my experience, you know, these things, it's like, okay, we're going to start and say, this is applicable in these cases, but then over time.
What are you suggesting we do with this, this paragraph, number three?
Maybe that should say, or maybe it should say, on sites with more frontage than 150 feet. Or I don't know what the right number is. I'm just saying, I think it doesn't work for narrow sites.
I think that Cameron makes a good point. If they don't want to meet, you know, because we don't want people lining up service entries along the street, right? That's the intent. Yeah, granted, it's not going to work on certain properties, but then they have to.
Have a conversation.
Yeah, they have to.
I think this is fine.
Okay.
Because he said that they'll, they'll push.
It's late, moving on. We're good. I'm good. I'm not going, I'm not going to the mat on any of these.
Yeah, just trying to point out.
These are my comments. And I'm not.
Keep going, Scott.
Okay, thank you. Page seven, landscaping shall include ground cover and shrubs. I have a maximum of 40 inches. On page seven, 4A1. Right here, right there. So I just have, you know, ground cover should be a maximum 30 inch, yeah. Because if it gets higher than that, then you start getting sight distance issues and stuff with cars. They say one tree, 24 inch box for every 300 square feet of yard area. Again, that seems frequent, especially depending on the species. If it's a palm tree, it's probably fine. If it's an oak tree, it's too tight. Next page, page eight, same issue, 300 square feet. Street trees shall be provided in an interval of 30 feet. Does that, does anybody know what, do we have a standard now?
Well, 30 feet is pretty typical.
That's my question.
That's the normal neighborhood.
That is, actually, one per 25 is consistent with the city's landscape code.
Okay.
So this is more generous.
Okay, 5A down at the bottom on page eight. Ground mounted equipment on private property. Ground mounted equipment such as air conditioning units, landscape controllers, transformers, fuse boxes, meters, stand pipes, fire sprinkler connectors shall be located underground. I don't think all this stuff can be located underground or realistically can be located underground. I don't know that you can put a stand pipe underground or fire sprinkler connectors. To me, we should add the word or. They should be underground or outside of the front yard setback.
I mean, I think.
Well, screen.
Screen.
Adequately screened.
Yeah, and what does staff mean by underground? Do you mean below grade in some kind of a vault? You're not talking about buried, are you? Because.
I think they are.
Because that's, I don't see how you can do an AC.
Well, it'd have to be in a vault, but it needs airflow around it. I mean, it's like, it's, it's not realistic.
I don't see I can do a condenser unit out in underground.
No, you can't.
And irrigation controls usually need to be accessible, so do transformers. So I think the main thing is screening and not located on front edge.
Yeah, or out of the side of the front yard setback.
Just add screen.
Yeah, okay.
Adequately screened.
What are we doing here? Are you guys taking notes on stuff that people generally agree with and you'll make revisions? Is that what we're doing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ideally, if we get, take the time to go through this, we could get a summary and then we could just take an action tonight.
Okay, cool.
And not continue it.
Okay, cool.
That's why I like it.
Yeah, I'd like to get, get through this tonight.
I do too, okay. The next page, page 11.
So you got five minutes.
Yeah, then we give you the hook.
Okay, then object less. Page 11, it talks about achieve this by stepping the second, third stories back conditional feet from the property line. So that's like wedding cake design, which I know is frequently discouraged. But this is.
Well, we want to, I think we do want setbacks for, to have variations. You don't want it just monolithic like skyscraper. That's, the idea is to have actual setback, to have.
Yeah, we don't want vertical walls.
Yeah, you don't want vertical walls. You want relief.
I, I understand that, but so are you guys cool with wedding cake design?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, moving on, moving on. Route down an F. Roof lines shall not extend horizontally by more than 20 feet in length without at least one prominent change as described below. 20 feet, you know, every 20 feet a change, that sounded kind of busy to me, but comments?
Make it 25, I don't know. I mean, if it's a, if it's a small development, which is mostly what we're going to see.
Yeah.
Then I don't think it's, I don't think it's.
Okay, moving on.
Yeah, moving on.
Okay, moving on. So then to get to the front and then skip this page, that was trying to. Okay, we'll skip the handwritten one.
Okay. So go on 15?
On the back of it, yeah, on 15 now. Okay, and this might be bumping Henry Lenny design issues, so I don't want, obviously, override that. This says, for buildings with two or more stories, the first floor shall have the tallest plate height be a minimum of 10 feet, 10% higher than any other plates. And I was thinking, unless all plates are 10 foot minimum.
Well, the idea is to get some variation there. Which, you're right, that could be a Henry Lenny because it's referred to in Spanish Colonial Revival.
Right.
So I say we leave it.
Okay, done, leave it. Roof materials, the following roof materials are permitted, terracotta flat or barrel tiles. Those don't work on low pitch or flattish roofs.
Yeah, but I noticed that it talks about a 3 and 12 minimum, which they do work on.
No, it would work on that. Does it, does this say somewhere that says?
It does say 3 and 12 somewhere. Zach, do you remember where that is?
3 and 12 required.
Well, I'm sure it says 3 and 12 is a minimum because anything less than that, you can't use, like you said, you can't use that.
Right, okay.
But it's in a different section.
I only copied the pages I made revisions to, so it could be on a page that I didn't copy.
I remember seeing it.
Okay.
You can incorporate the reference from that other section into here.
I don't think we have to.
If it, if it has to be 3 and 12 or steeper, then it, then these are fine.
Okay.
Okay, next page, page 16. I, there was stuff I didn't quite understand. And I think that we need to add sketches, which maybe you guys already did and put on the website. I don't know. It sounds like sketches were drawn.
Examples, Zach and I talked about providing examples wherever possible so that.
This is still SCR.
Yeah, this is all Spanish.
So I think it's reasonable to hide.
The flashing.
The flashing on SCR.
I do too.
Okay.
Not a contemporary, but on SCR for sure.
Under four eaves, eaves shall have exposed rafter tails. I know those aren't allowed in fire areas. Are any of these, these areas in fire areas?
Potentially the one open space site in Toledo.
I don't think that is.
I don't know that exposed rafter tails is necessary.
And again, I'm trying to think if I, I mean, I live in a high fire hazard in Toledo. I'm trying to think if my, if I have that, I might. I don't know. I don't remember.
I don't think it's allowed, but.
You can use treated.
Yeah.
You can use treated material, but, but I don't know that we need to dictate exposed rafter tails.
Okay, I don't, I guess.
I think we leave it.
Okay, fine. Exterior walls, walls, the walls shall be constructed, it says, with a 12 to 24 inch thick solid material or as false walls. I just said, re-strike that. Walls shall be constructed to provide the same appearance as a 12 to 24 inch thick wall.
I agree, I agree.
Okay, that's in.
Okay, yay.
You got one.
Always got a few.
Okay, exterior ceilings, page 17. If beamed ceilings are proposed, stained wood is required. I was thinking we should say stained or faux wood.
Oh, nice.
Because a lot of people put up like faux beams.
Yeah, but there's still wood.
Right.
Well, no, a lot of them are like foam and.
A form of a foam. I know what a foam, a foam is a form. Usually that's around, you know, architectural details, not the non-load bearing, you know.
So you're saying.
Elements.
I don't even know why this is, I mean, if this is.
It's exterior ceiling, so it's viewed from the street.
Yeah.
Okay, fine.
Real quick, just procedural reason.
I said you wanted that.
Can I get a motion to continue beyond 11 now that we are at 11?
I moved to continue beyond 11.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Sorry, doctor.
It's okay.
Exterior ceiling have, shall have a minimum clearance of nine feet. Should we say excluding beams? Like, can beams be lower than nine feet? Does it matter?
I don't think you need to put that in.
Okay, moving on. French style cement, what is that and is it appropriate with SCR?
I think that's regular cement. For some reason, it's called French style, but we could strike it and just allow cement.
I'm not familiar with that term, but I think a lot of people are going to be asking. They're going to be Googling a French style.
Yeah, yeah, Jonathan's Googling it.
Okay. I think there's windows, should say window types, materials and components, because we're talking about materials. Glass areas shall be broken up by mullions and transoms. Are we talking about every window, every glass area?
That's a Henry Lenny thing.
Is it, is it in there as that?
Yep.
See that, okay. Next page, page 18. Decorative metalwork shall be traditional Spanish Colonial Revival style steel. Decorative metalwork shall be traditional Spanish colonial revival style steel. Is tubular steel okay that looks like that?
Well, that is not decorative.
Nope.
Well, they could make it decorative, I would think.
I'd say no.
Yeah, but they're calling out decorative.
Right.
So you can probably use, you know, miscellaneous iron that's tube steel, that's exposed.
Right.
But it shouldn't be specifically as a decorative metalwork because that implies that it's turned, you know, it's decorative. So I say leave it.
Okay. Permitted door types, wood, wood, glass, fiberglass. Oh, never mind, you already have fiberglass, strike. Recessed lightings, primitive cans are treated with wrought iron or a painted shroud. How do you treat a recessed can light with wrought iron? Do you put a grill over it or something?
Again, that's a Henry Lenny thing, which I think we could easily cross out because it should be a fixture.
Yeah.
That's appropriate.
So take out that item two.
Take it, yeah, G2.
Okay.
Okay.
Take out the I.
Or G, Roman numeral, double I or whatever, however that's counted, yeah.
Balconies and porches shall be constructed or iron or wood, should say of iron or wood with painted or stained finishes. Is stucco allowed or no? I was saying this is a Henry Lenny thing.
Shall be constructed of iron or wood. Yeah, stucco should be allowed. Balconies and porches.
I would think at a minimum you might have some stucco columns or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, stucco and/or it could be a solid wall in some cases.
Right.
Okay. I think we should add more sketches, maybe. 2D, bottom line, recessed balconies or porches. What's a recessed?
It means it's an any, not an outie.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's building on both sides and it comes in?
Yes.
Got it. This is probably a Henry Lenny thing. Columns spaced in northern more than six times the width from center to center.
Yeah, that definitely is.
That's what I was meaning.
Yeah, you can't, don't mess with that.
What arches, arches shall be fully round or semi-circular.
I agree. Leave it.
Yep.
What's the, what is the...
We don't want those truncated arches.
No, that's a flat arch, but what's a, what's a, I mean a...
Fully round is the best.
Does that mean from there to there?
That means full circle.
So isn't that, well, a full circle would be like this.
No, not a circle.
A half circle.
Half circle.
Okay, isn't, so that's the same as semi-circular, isn't it? I agree, no flat arches.
Yeah.
I'm just saying.
Just get rid of semi-circular.
Maybe word it better.
I don't know.
You couldn't have half a pentagon or half a hexagon as your arch.
Okay, exterior staircase, the tread shall be stone, paper, or finished concrete.
What about tile?
Yeah, what about tile or wood, is anything?
Tile would be okay, and wood, no.
No?
Mm-mm.
Yeah, tile's fine.
Tile's fine. Decorative tile.
Decorative tile.
Okay, anything in Mission, I have the same comments that I had for SCR.
Agreed.
And then on page 24, still, I think we should add some sketches as needed.
Well, there's images in there, right?
That sounds like the added images that I didn't, that probably at my request, that I haven't seen yet.
Yeah, there's the concept of an implementation guide that has, and I don't know, Zach, we talked about that, I think, months ago, this concept of an implementation guide that would provide more prescriptive guidance on this. What did you guys, and I think you're going to talk to the consultant about that? What transpired there? Do you remember that conversation we had on that?
We've had a few conversations about that at the study session and then at the individual meetings of planning commissioners and then Commissioner McCann's written comments saying we need images. The consultant gave us a document a week ago that didn't make it into this packet, partly because it's 40 pages. It's on the website, I emailed it to you last Thursday, I think almost a week ago. Thursday or Friday.
It probably doesn't need to go, that would not go to council, I don't think. We're just talking zoning and that prescriptive guidance is just an aid. It's an aid, it's a work aid to help illustrate these concepts. I don't know that we need those to pass this.
We don't want to put it in the zoning code, but we would like you to say you like the idea of having it, which it includes the entire objective standards, the 40 pages, and next to each page it has diagrams and images.
We just leave that to staff to...
I haven't seen that, so...
But if you have comments on that, we can have the consultant make tweaks, that was in the budget.
And we could do that anytime because that's just guidance.
Yeah, we can make tweaks later.
That's not, that's not an ordinance, yeah.
I think on this other one, materials and colors, I think we should leave that because there's a lot of substandard looking materials.
Okay.
So I hate to kind of open that up too much.
Okay, wood just doesn't last very well.
Copy McCann's comments.
It's going to perform very well over time. Okay, you probably feel the same way then about decorative accents and details on the next page? Metal or wood awnings?
Or wood look?
Yeah, I mean, you could have a fiberglass thing that looked like wood, but it's not going to, you know, deteriorate and...
I don't know why we need to say that.
Okay, fine. Metal roofing systems are acceptable if earth colors are used. Warm and muted shades of brown, gray, beige, red. Why specify color? Los Molinos is black. I mean, if this is in the eclectic area...
Well, this is just regarding specifically like corrugated metal, so we don't, the staff is trying to get away from unfinished corrugated aluminum or metal. So it doesn't look raw, it looks finished, coated, something.
Well, it could be patinaed and coated, clear coated.
Yeah.
And that's a good look. So I don't know if we want to be this specific. I think I agree with his note here.
Are you okay?
Especially in Los Molinos district.
Right, yeah, I personally kind of like the colors because it does, it adds a lot of character when it's a color versus that silver. It just looked, I don't, that's just a personal preference.
Yeah, but if it's patinas and it's sealed properly, it looks better than a color.
Well, then that's, but we need to say that then. If we, if it's going to be unfinished, then it should be a lot...
Let's give our staff a little bit of leeway there.
Well, this isn't for staff, this is for the applicants to come in and get...
No, I know, but the staff is still going to have to review it. I mean, they're not going to approve some, you know, plastic or...
No, 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 the whole idea behind objective standards is it's binary. You meet it or you don't. There's no, the review is binary, it's not interpreted. That's the whole point, there's no interpretation.
Okay, so we could say clear coated patina.
That'd be fine. Would be, and just add it to the colors.
Yeah.
But this, like, these colors wouldn't allow for Los Molinos Brewery's black roof. Why, I don't know why we're specifying these colors. We could say in a finished color or...
Colors found in nature. So we don't get those, you know, super graphic...
Fuchsia.
Fusha is a color found in nature.
I guess they're all found in nature.
No, no, there's some that are...
I bet they are poisonous frogs.
Add black then if you want.
Okay, let's add black.
Add black and...
And clear coated patina.
Clear coated patina.
All right, sold, next.
Moving on. Wall finishes, exterior walls shall have the look of raw exposed materials. And then...
It's a little shaky on the copy.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. I was in my father-in-law's condo.
Is it getting late, I guess? Like, wow.
And then, I didn't know if this, I didn't know if this, I had a couple, can we, should we add a section that allows staff to approve minor variations of these standards? I mean, I think we should, so staff has some flexibility.
The section of the zoning code that this is going to go in has a provision that says the city planner can review the definition of any term and define it in a common sense way as applied elsewhere in the code.
Okay.
So I think we'd take that discretion and then just negotiating with an applicant, they're probably going to want to come to an agreement with us on what something means, just so they can get their review done.
Okay, and then planning commissioner, of course, approves larger projects, that's just built into it. Okay, thank you for your patience.
That's it?
Yep.
Thanks, Scott.
I love you.
All right. Karen, do you have any last comments?
No, I do not.
Okay.
I'm partial to red roofs.
Let's, let's consider our options. We have the resolution and... What else do we need to do to move this forward, Zach? Is it just adopting the resolution?
I just changed the slide. It would be two parts, to find it exempt from CEQA, and that's pursuant to the community plan exemption, and that's also because the city council already anticipated these changes when they approved the housing element and they had a full EIR. So you'd have to find this CEQA exempt and then adopt a resolution recommending the city council adopt an ordinance approving the ZA as modified in this hearing and as staff would make some common sense cleanups and revisions. You don't have the full ordinance in your packet. You have what we called a zoning amendment in your packet. The council ordinance would have a different form and content, but we would characterize it based on these...
Are we comfortable with this? I'll go ahead and move it then. I'll move staff recommendations, one and two, determining that the zoning amendment is exempt from CEQA per the community plan exemption. And item two, which is the adoption of Resolution PC 2402-0 recommending the city council adopt an ordinance approving zoning amendment, ZA 24-193. With the changes that we just reviewed as a team.
Second.
All right, that's been seconded by Commissioner McCann. Is there any discussion on that? Enough discussion already, I guess. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Zach, well done. Thank you for sticking with us.
Zach and Jonathan.
Yeah. And to every, and all of you guys for sticking with the long meeting tonight. Okay, but that's what happens, we don't have a quorum. All right, all right.
We started about six.
Yes, we have no new business, we have no old business, and I will turn now to staff for their staff reports of commissioners and staff.
I don't have too much to report, other than several of the planning staff did attend the state conference for the APA in Riverside. That was Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. So that was just a good experience. It's the one main event that staff goes to during the year. So in particular, a couple of our newer or younger staff that got the opportunity to sit in on different sessions, I think it was very valuable for them. So just, just that one item, unless there are any questions.
I have two quick questions. One, is there a, so just design review stuff for me next week was canceled?
Yes.
Okay, and then I see here on the TFA, is the housing element action plan coming back to us again in two weeks?
No, it is not.
Okay, sweet. So do we have anything for that meeting?
As of now, no. So we will review anything that could be going on and send out a cancellation notice if there is no business to be heard at that meeting.
Okay, I think we did double duty tonight.
Yeah, and I already made everyone aware of the next two weeks.
Okay.
Sounds like there's nothing.
I also should have announced, I don't think I had done this at a planning commission meeting.